Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. Our first item of business is the invocation, and I will ask Councilmember Drucker to deliver it, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are blessed to be together tonight as we come together again to do the good work of the people. Those of us up sitting up here are always challenged on how to retain positive outcomes that are for the greater good for our community and that our purpose is driven by our common goals in the end. I want to continue to thank all our staff and all of my council members for all the hard work that we've put in in the last month and months before that. As we continue to move forward with our process of our redevelopment of our government campus, please know that us, we're trying to do the best that we can every day for all of you. I urge you all to be patient and kind with each other as we navigate through this process. I am confident that with compassion, caring, and loving hearts in this community, we can move forward. I also want a special prayer. Earlier today, I buried the matriarch of our family, and I want to thank you.
So sorry for your loss. Will everyone please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Miss Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Naclis.
Here.
Councilmember Drucker.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Councilmember Victor.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll move to the agenda in a minute, and we will shortly hear from our representatives in Tallahassee, State Senator Tina Polsky and State Representative Peggy Gossett-Seyman. You'll be upcoming in just a moment or so. Pleased to have all of you here, including those of you who are here to talk about Item 9F, but as we are now moving to amendments to the agenda, I wanted to tell everyone and announce that I'm going to move that we remove Item 9F concerning the parking zones off the agenda. I will note that staff plan no substantive changes to our current framework of beach parking, but I think it's important we not proceed tonight because there's been a lot of misunderstanding and misinformation that's gotten out there, and I want staff to have more time to explain its recommendations, provide additional information, and communicate with residents and beach permit holders about any potential changes, even though nothing substantive to the framework has been planned. So with that, I'm going to move, we take Item 9F off, and I'll also move that we add an Item 9K, Resolution 842025, which is a merchant services agreement with Bank of America that continues the agreement that was in place until recently. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, then, all those in favor of moving the agenda that way, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. So anyone who came to talk about the beach permit program, it is not on the agenda. We will not discuss it tonight. You're free to stay, of course, but I wanted to put that out there now because I didn't want you all waiting indefinitely, and staff will follow up with additional information as we consider all the different concerns that are raised, and thank you for those. We'll now move to the minutes, and we have the minutes of the strategic planning sessions of May 7th and 8th, the workshop meeting of May 27th, and the regular meeting of May 27th. Are there any corrections or changes? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt all sets of minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the minutes are approved. We'll now turn to proclamations and presentations, and we're very pleased to have Senator Berman and Representative Peggy Gossett-Seyman with us. I understand that, I'm sorry, Senator Tina Polsky and Senator Berman is not with us, but we're very pleased to have Senator Polsky and Representative Gossett-Seyman to tell us about all the great things in Tallahassee and all the things in Tallahassee, great or not. So Representative, Senator.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am Senator Tina Polsky. I co-senate with Senator Lori Berman. We each have about half of Boca Raton. I have the southern half, and she has the northern half, and we have other areas as well, obviously. And I have a, Lori Berman has the best excuse in the world for not being here. She is now a grandmother, and her grandbaby, her grandson, is in New York City, so she is there for the week. So I said that I would take this on, and glad to have Representative Gossett-Seyman here as well. So I wanted to start with an update on the process. You may have heard, especially for those of you on the dais who know all this that's going on, but for everyone else, the one requirement we have during legislative session, which is a 60-day session, is to pass a balanced budget. And we did not pass a budget this 60-day session, which ended at the very beginning of May. This is my seventh year in the legislature. I've never seen anything like this. Sometimes we extend a day or two so we can vote, but this is really unusual. So we were back there last week for more conference meetings, and the general assumption is that we will get the budget in a few days. There's a 72-hour cooling-off period, and hopefully on Monday, June 16th, we will go back there. We will have questions, debate, and vote on this actual budget. So that is where we are now. Very importantly, for Boca Raton, I know I have, and as well with, I think Representative Gossett-Seyman has for both Senator Berman and I, we have successfully gotten funding in the budget thus far. Big warning, the budget is not done. Anything can come out at any time. It is also subject to the governor's veto, all of it. So even if we get past the actual budget that we will vote on, fingers crossed, everyone else has to do their work to tell the governor, keep these important projects. But just as an overview of what we have been successful to get so far, which is a big step nonetheless, just to get your projects in the budget at this point is a big accomplishment, and thanks to our very hard-working staff and lobbyists from the city of Boca Raton and you all, and us, that we have been able to get these projects so far. I have the project for the city of Boca, for the Spanish River Boulevard grade separation of El Rio Trail. I also have some nonprofits that are local to us that I have so far secured the funding, the HAB Center, Boca Helping Hands, Falk Center, and Jewish Family Services Summer Camp, which are all in greater Boca. Senator Berman, since she's not here, I wanted to share, she has the funding secured for the city of Boca Raton drinking water and transmission distribution improvements, some for FAU, and funding for a variety of nonprofits, including Jark Florida, Albert Jewish Family Services, and Rails JFS. So there are some really good things in the budget. Let's hope that they stay and that we are able to get them across the finish line. You may have heard, for those of you who really follow all this, there was a fear that there was, we were going to lose funding for special AP classes that are really important to our school district, and after a lot of fighting and some really good community advocacy, that funding is back in the budget. So that is good news. That should all continue as per usual. One thing to be aware of that's not great is there's, right now, $6 million being proposed for schools of hope charter schools that are going to create a problem for our public schools. And it's also not great to just shove it into the budget at the end and not have proper policy discussions, and sometimes that happens. So be aware of that. I wanted to talk about, obviously, we passed a lot of bills, you know, several hundred, and all the policy bills are done, except, as I said, sometimes policy language is kind of shoved in the budget, which is not great, but it is what happens. But the policy stuff is supposed to be done when we finished session on May 2nd. I always like to share with you preemption bills that have happened because you are a local government and you should be able to make your decisions, what is best for the city of Boca Raton. And unfortunately, in the seven years that I have been there, every single year, we load on more and more preemption, meaning the state makes the decisions for you and takes away your decision-making authority. Compared to other years that I've been there, this was not as strong at all. Maybe they kind of did everything they needed to do, but there are a few that I wanted you to be aware of. One that just got a lot of press, and it may not, it's not going to affect the city of Boca because from what I understand, we never had fluoride in our water, but now no one is allowed to have fluoride in their water. Even if you are in greater Palm Beach County, you know, unincorporated Palm Beach County, they did have fluoride, and I guess as of July 1st, they will not be allowed to do that anymore. There are some construction regulation preemptions in HB 683. It prohibits local governments from prohibiting property owners from installing synthetic turf. May not be a huge issue, but if it's something that, you know, you wanted to be able to regulate, now you won't be able to. This one is really interesting and could end up being a big issue for Boca Raton. It is not signed yet by the governor, but probably will be. Senate Bill 118, which regulates the building of a presidential library, and since there have been rumors that FAU might be housing a presidential library, you on that dais are not entitled to make any zoning decisions whatsoever. So that is completely preempted, so sorry for that, I voted against it. House Bill 1137, utility service restrictions, has been signed by the governor. This expands an existing preemption of utility fuel sources to apply to boards, agencies, commissions, and authorities of counties and municipal corporations. Preempted entities cannot restrict, prohibit fuel sources of energy used, delivered, or supplied by specified utilities. And finally, Senate Bill 180, called emergencies, which is pending signature of the governor, adds land development regulation on local governments during a post-storm period, specifically for one year after a storm, that would prevent development or increase the burden of construction permitting, et cetera. So those are some that I think you might want to keep an eye out. There was also one relating to agricultural lands, but the city of Boca doesn't have too much of that. Sometimes what we do, especially for myself, who is in the minority party, we pride ourselves on trying to kill bad bills because we can't always get the policy that we believe is important across the finish line. But we try really hard to explain when there are bad bills that hurt citizens of Florida, why they're bad, and we've been successful at taking out parts of bills or bills entirely by, you know, strong advocacy against them. So this session, we successfully killed many bills or parts of bills, especially ones that banned DEI from local governments and state agencies, being able to kind of run the way they want to run, especially with respect to women-owned businesses or minority-owned businesses, and it would really have upended the way that you would purport to run your government how you see fit. There was a bill to allow job applicants to give up their right to make the minimum wage, which is, you know, on its face, probably illegal and unconstitutional, but also seemingly very unfair. There was also a bill that we killed that would have prohibited local governments from passing laws against the use of single-use plastic containers. So that is good news. On the issue of property insurance, we did nothing on property insurance this year. No material change was proposed, unfortunately. One bill that took up a lot of time and oxygen was Senate Bill 7016, which imposes significant new barriers on the petition collecting process, making it harder for everyday Floridians to propose amendments to the state constitution. There's quite a few issues with this. If you are someone who is involved in petition gathering or collecting them from your friends because you believe in the causes, be careful because you could get in trouble with the law if you have more than 25 on hand. Otherwise, you need to register as a petition circulator. They have made it really, really difficult to get these petitions just signed, not voted on, not becoming law, but just to be able to be considered. The one that I found to be the most frustrating part of this bill was that this bill, which has already been signed by the governor, requires our supervisor elections to contact every person who signed a petition. So if you might, you will be faced with someone at Publix who has a clean water petition. Do you, are you interested in clean water? Sure. So you fill it out. Now you have to give identifying information, like social security or Florida license or election ID, and then you're going to get a letter from the supervisor elections that says, are you sure you really meant to vote on this, or to not vote on it, to sign this petition? Which is a huge burden for the supervisor elections. The converse of that is, if, let's say, you filled it out incorrectly, or they couldn't match your signature, they won't call you to check, to see, to try to cure the situation. You know they can cure ballots, but they won't allow you to cure the petition or tell you that even there's been a problem, and yet they'll make sure that you're really meant to vote on it. So you can see where this is going, that the state government does not want these ballot amendments to be put on the, on the next election. We are in the middle of proposing our own ballot initiatives. One that you might want to keep an eye out for is one that would require us to put a much higher percentage of money into reserves. We already have one of the highest reserves in the country, and basically, it's taking billions of dollars out of the use of the state government for needed resources. And it's just, in my mind, not necessary, but it will go to the voters. But the difference is, we can put anything on the ballot that we want, but when citizens are the ones who are trying to get their own voices heard, we have made it almost impossible. There's a lot more provisions to it. I won't bore you with those, but trust me when I say it is going to be really difficult. One other issue I wanted to highlight is with respect to, excuse me, the condo reform that is obviously a big issue for the city of Boca Raton. The bill has not been signed yet, so I don't want to go too much into it, but this was a bill designed to help condominium owners, to give them a little more time, to get their sirs, to give them a little more leeway and flexibility, and, you know, there's quite a bit there. So hopefully, this will be signed, and it will help alleviate a little of the stress that those are feeling, but in the end, it doesn't really change the requirements, and those are not going to be changed in terms of safety and what needs to get done and how that is paid for. So if those, if people were looking for, you know, a total change to that, it did not happen this session, but there was a, you know, an effort to make sure that there's a little easing up on some of the burdens, at least from a time perspective. I wanted to just very quickly talk about several bills that I was able to get passed, and luckily, these have all been signed by the governor. So one is respect to fentanyl testing, that all hospitals, when they are testing someone for drug overdoses, have to include fentanyl testing as one of those. Some hospitals are already doing it, but not all. Seems like a no-brainer, and so now it will be. Related, somehow I've become an expert in this area, is Fentanyl Awareness Day, which I wanted to tell you all about because it's August 21st, so I am pleased asking you and encouraging you as the city to spread some awareness on August 21st about fentanyl awareness. The schools will hopefully be doing it. This is not mandatory, but it is an attempt to give information to the public about how dangerous and deadly fentanyl is and to be very careful. And so if we could all participate in Fentanyl Awareness Day, I would certainly appreciate that. I also passed a bill relating to public education background screening requirements. There are quite a few teachers, instructors, after-school instructors who are required to have background checks, and so now we will have a website that gives all the information on what those requirements are, how to go about it, and for parents to know what to expect, and for those who are looking to get a background screening, for them to know what to expect. And finally, a really important bill that relates to notary public fraud. So in Spanish language, a notorio público usually means an attorney in a Latin American country. In the U.S., notary public is merely someone who can sign a document, but there are a lot of fraudulent people out there who are scamming immigrants, saying that they can provide immigration services that an attorney would provide, and taking thousands of dollars from them, and they are not attorneys. And so this bill strengthens the unauthorized practice of law, provides an opportunity for someone to seek redress, and gives very specifics on how a notary is allowed to publicize their services. So I'm very happy to do that bill, to hopefully save people, you know, from being defrauded out of their money. Before I turn it over to Representative Gossett-Seyman, Senator Berman and I have a Florida senator's proclamation for the great city of Boca Raton that we wanted to share with you. We are recognizing the centennial of Boca Raton in, well, sorry, this was supposed to be from May, but whereas Boca Raton was first incorporated as the town of Boca Raton A. on June 24th, 1924, in May 1925, the city was reincorporated as the town of Boca Raton at the height of the Florida land boom, and whereas the Boca Raton Town Council commissioned noted society architect Addison Meisner to plan a world-class resort community, the Cloister Inn, which was completed in 1926, the Cloister Inn continues its reign as a city landmark, as the Boca Raton. Meisner's architectural style continues to influence the city. And whereas IBM Boca Raton was opened in August 1981, the large-scale manufacturing plant produced its System 360 Model 20 midsize computer. IBM Boca Raton became IBM South Florida in the 1990s and has continued its worldwide impact on technology, both software and hardware. And whereas Boca Raton opened the Boca Raton Airport in 1936, and it was later transformed into the Boca Raton Army Airfield in 1942 during World War II. The airport transitioned to civilian use in 1948, and today serves the corporate recreational and flight training needs of the community, averaging over 83,000 operations per year. And whereas Boca Raton is home to Florida Atlantic University, established in 1964 as the first public university in the Miami metro area, and now serves more than 30,000 students. And whereas Boca Raton is the home to about 100,000 residents within the city limits and another 125,000 in West Boca, it's the core of the South Palm Beach County metropolitan community, offering beautiful parks and facilities, economic opportunities, and a unique quality of life that is the envy of its neighbors. Now, therefore, we, Senators Lori Berman and Tina Polsky of Florida Senate Districts 26 and 30, do hereby recognize the centennial of Boca Raton in May of 2025. Congratulations to all of us.
Thank you.
And maybe we could take a picture?
Yes. Yes, we can take a picture. I don't, by the way, Representative Gossett-Seyman, it's okay if you didn't bring anything. If you have anything, we can take the picture jointly too, or then that's fine. Why don't we take the picture, and you can prepare your remarks? Thank you, Senator.
It's from the Senate, so I'm not a senator.
Well, thank you, Senator, for the update for the proclamation and your service. Representative Gossett-Seyman, very pleased to see you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's an honor to be here. It's also an honor to work with the senators, both of whom we jointly, as Senator Polsky said, run so many appropriations for. Totally, I filed $45 million in appropriations, mostly for Boca Raton, but I took on a few other municipalities neighboring because they needed assistance. So far, we're doing well, very well. As the senator stated, I shared these approaches with her. The leadership and the governor is very well aware that not everyone in Boca lives on the ocean and drives a Lambo, which I, as a message, I've tried to, you know, port tell every single time. We have hard-working families, a lot of families with kids, singles, hard-working people, and our retirees. So today, I wanted to talk about the things in addition to the senator's remarks that are important, and please note that we started session actually two, almost two weeks late due to the snowstorm, the inauguration, and the special session. This has been a very unusual time, but as with anything in life, we roll with the punches and we do the best we can, especially when it's very important to our constituents. I'll tell you, I ran two very important bills that came out of people right here in Boca Raton who emailed me. I was stunned they were this important because when I filed them, like 500 people within a week emailed me, this is so great. One was a debt collection bill. A guy living in Boca said, gee, I get the, I'm inundated by these class-action lawsuits because I own self-storage units, and if I, you know, miss a payment, I get into a class-action suit, and there's no, there's no state law that has been updated forbidding any kind of communication other than telegrams and phone calls. So these people not replying to emails, texts, or other push notifications and so forth would be liable for a class-action suit for not having to answer. And this bill passed and has been signed by the governor last week, and it will prohibit anything but email-
anything but email communication between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. And there is a specific attorney in Florida who, whose license plate is our outdated statute. And this will end on July 1. And the other one was very interesting, and it was a property situation where we have a residential law prohibiting squatting in properties and homes, particularly in COVID. There were a lot of people moving into vacant buildings and taking them over and presuming they would employ squatter's rights to evidently own them. This came to me from a Boynton Beach couple who said, "Gee, we don't have that law for commercial, and our parents' restaurant, after the parents died, was overwhelmed by people moving in and turning a restaurant into a house, and they had no way of getting them out without the judicial process," which was costly, and they gave up. Turned out, we had 120 of these cases in Orlando, a case in Gainesville where 19 people took over an abandoned hotel couldn't be removed, cases in Melbourne, Jacksonville, all over. I ran the bill. Everyone has been so happy with this because realtors, homeowners, and now commercial owners can enjoy not having squatters take over their properties without any kind of removal. It would require a sheriff attending with proof of ownership by the landlord or owner and accompanying peaceful removal and property of the people squatting unless, in that time, they uncover criminal activity, in which case there would be criminal charges immediately involved. Again, a great, a great tool for our business community. It showed to me it helps to read your emails, because those came to me from an email from Boca Raton residents. Another bill I co-sponsored, which ran nationally, I was shocked, and is being copied now by other states, is our State Parks Bill. Prohibits development, golf courses, hotels, frisbee golf, which is actually a lot of fun, but not able to be used and employed in our current state parks as they stand right now. If we have a new state park open, which wants to have employ any kind of a different activity or a new hotel, that's one thing, but our current state parks are, into infinity, are protected from development. And then lastly, I ran the Israeli bonds bill, which allows any municipality or county to purchase unrated Israeli bonds. Our clerk of court, Joe Abruzzo, has actually turned over an $83 million return on our county investment in Israeli bonds. They are also very employed by, interestingly enough, the states of New York, California, Texas, and Illinois, who know that this is a very sound investment. Though, that was a great, a great bill. I was with the governor three times last week. It's like a world record. I said you should just buy a condo in Boca, because he keeps saying, "Oh, Boca's so great" when he does his interviews. But a key, a key day was in Jupiter last week. We met with Kevin Guthrie, our Department of Emergency Management Chief, and he attended at a Home Depot with the governor, an announcement of, of course, the impending hurricane season. They have established a new system of immediate updating and texting called Beacon, which I mentioned to Mayor Singer, and I'll get that out to you when we have more details. It will enhance, you guys do a great job with your emergency management, it will enhance communication with the state. God willing, we don't have any storms, but in the case we do, it will improve that communication. There's 45, apparently 45 key hurricane experts that the state uses on a daily and basis during season, during the height of the season, August, September, October, and that they have these resources to say what's happening, where are the winds, where are the currents, what's going on with the Sahara dust. So it's very unusual to hear that we have confidence at that level with that many experts. A height of, a height of the session was having your detective, Randa White, appear at the session and be honored on the floor of the House. She's an amazing person. She was like a superstar, rock star, whatever you want to call her that day. She got two standing ovations. She actually turned a little pink with her, within the process, but due to all of her safety and security that she has provided for the city over these some 20-some years, and we hope to have perhaps another officer up next year. She was amazing. She got a tour of the Capitol, a tour, a behind-the-scenes tours of FDLE, Capitol Police, and it's cool to know that she also has connections should she need them at the state level. Let's talk about approps. All those named by the senator for herself and Senator Berman are actually still moving. We're hoping for the best for Boca Raton. It's been an odd year because of the budget back and forth, and people had different priorities with regards to insurance and, and some of the condo and HOA reforms. I'll tell you, I appreciate the council being there when I needed to call someone for a backup letter. You all visited me. I think one of you missed the visit, but we'll see you next year. That's cool. But, but the, it's really important sometimes to have a letter from a councilperson to present to a leader or a budget person and say, "Look, this is what they're saying back in Boca. Here is your proof." And also, I bring letters, the residents write in emails, and I'll copy them all and hand them out to leaders all across the board. The budget chairs, the committee chairs and vice chairs, the Speaker of the House, even to the Senate President, who is actually a neighbor of mine in Tallahassee. That's been a big, a big help, Senator Hooper. And I'll get them, and they say, "This is what we need all," and it's, it's a great asset. And when I, when I needed help on the TDUs and also the, perhaps, the considered removal of the tourist tax, you all stepped up to the plate. Those two concerns have been put on the, they've been benched for the time being and hopefully forever, and also with tort reform. Sometimes bills are run and committees hear things, not, not for the eventual passage in signing, but to get awareness out about a topic. So you all know, when you see something that isn't moving, and I'm sure it's like this in the Senate, sometimes it's just for the communication. Here's what this county or this city needs that may or may not be useful for the whole state, and it doesn't really pass every committee or get signed. So if you see things early on in the process, it's sometimes a message bill and not necessarily one intended to be law. And so sometimes it freaks residents out, but we know sometimes what's going on. And I could say that the Boca Drinking Water, the El Rio Trail, which your genius engineering department came up with, you know, digging a tunnel under Spanish River Boulevard, and you all put it, put forth a quick investigation of the number of vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle crashes at that, and there were numerous, including one fatality. And that, that kind of data is proof also for needing an appropriation. That's moving. And the Falk, the HAB Center, Helping Hands, JARC, we're working hard to get all of this funded again and see what we can do further for the city. I think that about covers it. We do have $200 million coming back for My Safe Florida Home, that if you want to do an email for your residents and encourage them to sign up early, it's first come, first served for hardening of windows, doors, garage doors, roofs, and roof trusses, and this is a great asset, especially for those on a limited budget or are retirees. My Safe Condo did not fully get funded because we are still at odds about what to do with condo reforms, but we're hoping that this comes forth in the near future. I think that about wraps it up, except that I appreciate you all. I was 45 days straight up there, and I was out on the boat yesterday for the first time since Thanksgiving, and it was a joy. At low tide, dogs were running around Lake Boca because of the sandbars. It was hilarious. It was like a dog beach in Lake Boca. And I'll tell you, it's a joy to come back to your parks and the waterways and everything that's good about Boca and get a one-day break for that. So thank you for everything you do to help me get everything going forward. Thank you to our great senators and our leadership. If we need anything between now and the 16th or maybe 18th of June, they're talking about pushing it back again, we'll certainly get, get ahold of you all. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Representative, for the update and your service. Council members, no questions for our reps? Or Deputy Mayor?
Did you have any questions? Sorry, forgot to ask that.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
No questions. I just was gonna make a comment and say thank you to you, House Representative Gossett-Sidman, and to Senator Polsky, and to Senator Berman, who's not here, who I'm sending my congratulations to. I know how hard you're working, and it's hours and hours and hours, and it's definitely not for the big paycheck. So thank you for, for all the work that you're, that you're doing up there and all the advocacy for Boca Raton. And I also just want to say congratulations to Mayor Singer, Yvette Drucker, and Mark Wigder, and City Manager George Brown on being hometown heroes and also advocating for our city so well. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We're definitely known, we're on the map up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, thank you both and your teams for coming here and your advocacy. We appreciate it. All right. You're welcome to stay and hear more, but we realize you've got other places to represent as well, so thank you. We'll now turn to board appointments. Would any member of the public wish to comment on a board appointment before we have remaining interviews? Seeing no one, we'll entertain any more applicants for the Historic Preservation Board. We had some come forward yesterday. Anyone here to interview for the Historic Preservation Board? Ms. Schultz, yes, we heard you yesterday. You do not need to speak again.
I have more to say.
If you, if you'd like to, you may. So please, please come forward. No, Ms. Schultz, you may speak if you want. You're here, so please, you can come forward if you like. Please give your name and address.
Thank you. I am here because I'm very interested in joining the Historic Preservation Board.
And Ms. Schultz, you do have to give your name and address again, please.
You want my name?
And your address, please, yes.
Okay. Dr. Susan Schultz.
Excuse me, Doctor.
Resident for over 40 years in Boca, now living downtown in Boca Raton officially. I work, I went to FAU. I have been a incredible citizen, and I'm still working to make a difference, in my opinion. My, my work brings me to over almost 100 countries. So as Boca invites or attracts more people internationally, I feel I'm a good communicator, and I've given speeches and I speak every language, but I'm sure you don't want to hear that right now, but I do. I've been involved in Boca, again, for over 40 years. I don't have a summer home. I am here all the time. I'm very involved. I got a doctoral degree at FAU. I go under the water as a scuba diver. My parents built a home in Century Village, so I know that area, even though it's not officially Boca Raton. Again, my goal is to show you I am committed to making things happen and sustaining things in Boca. I'm active member of the Museum of Modern Art and the Boca Raton Historical Society. I volunteer for the fire department. I have a uniform. I'm very involved. That's what I'm trying to show you. And I raise my hand whenever something is needed. I'm a curator at the museum. I'm a toastmaster. Again, I can speak in lots of different languages. And my goal is to be appointed to the board so I can make a good difference with the city council by giving presentations, writing articles, and just doing whatever is needed. So please consider me.
Thank you, Doctor.
Any questions?
All right, thank you. Any other applicants for the Historic Preservation Board? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Singer, members of the council. I'm Elaine DiCostanzo. I live at 785 Alamanda Street in Old Floresta. I am eager to serve a second term on the Board of Boca Raton Historic Preservation Board because of my deep commitment to preserving our city's rich history and ensuring that its architectural and cultural legacy continues to enhance our community in immeasurable ways. During my first term, I worked hard to collaborate with residents and my fellow board members to strike the right balance between practical and historic considerations of proposed renovations and buildings. I also collaborated on educational outreach to highlight Boca Raton's architectural heritage and supporting the board's mission to promote the architectural and cultural welfare of our city. I am motivated to continue this work because I am passionate about projects, about protecting our historic homes and buildings, and ensuring that future generations connect with Boca Raton's roots and the foundational vision for our city. In a second term, I aim to further advance restoration projects in partnership with the Boca Raton Historical Society and expand community awareness of our historic neighborhoods and landmarks. My experience on the board has equipped me with a deeper understanding of our local history, the application of our guidelines, and the importance of balancing the needs of homeowners with the aesthetic principles in those guidelines. I am dedicated to furthering Boca Raton's unique character, and I respectfully request the opportunity to serve another term and contribute to our shared vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. I don't think so. Thank you. And is Mr. Lynch present? Edward Lynch? All right. Council members, we have one vacancy for a Boca Raton Historical Designee, Society Designee, which again is Ms. DiCostanzo. I suggest we take that up separately, so I'll move that we reappoint her to that one spot since it's designated for her.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor of that reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, you're reappointed. Thank you. And now we have two, we have no AIA members, so we have two at-large vacancies to appoint. Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I suggest we do the following, that I would move that we reappoint Mr. Graves, who is an incumbent, to this board, and then we leave open the remaining seat until we can find somebody who is going to apply that has the necessary background. I believe they're required to be an AIA member and architect.
I, if I, my math is right, I think we have two at-large sheets that we can fill tonight.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Okay.
Because Mr. Morgado is not reapplying, so that would be if we reappoint Mr. Graves, then someone would have to take Mr. Morgado's spot.
Very good. Well, then, let me, let me rephrase to say that I'd like to nominate Mr. Graves. And why don't we nominate everybody who came and applied and spoke here and interviewed? That would be Ms. Schultz, Mr. Zarekian, and Mr. Pearlman.
All right, is there a second for that? Well, Mr. Thompson is proposing we just vote, put everyone up on the board and vote. That's, I have no strong objection to that. I was going to move, I was going to move that we appoint one particular member, but if council members want to do it that way, we could. Ms. Nagliss? I'll, I'll go then. I was, I appreciate everyone applying. We can't get spots for everyone. I was going to move that we appoint Michael Zarekian, and I'm making that motion based on his prior service and interest in historic preservation from his other service in Massachusetts and his time serving on HOAs here. Ms. Drucker?
So we have on the table Mr.
We have Mr. Graves and Mr. Zarekian.
Second.
Any further discussion or names?
I'd also like to move that we appoint Mr. Graves and Dr. Susan Schultz.
Okay, so we've got three names forward. Any other names, please?
Second, Ms. Nagliss's motion.
Okay, well, we don't, so I put forth, can't do it that way. We can just, we can do a vote because we have two seconds competing. Why don't we just take that as three names in nomination of Graves, Schultz, and Zarekian, and then we can have a roll-call vote if there are no other names? All right, then Ms. Sidens, please.
Mayor Singer.
Graves and Zarekian.
Deputy Mayor Nagliss.
Graves and Schultz.
Councilmember Drucker.
Graves and Zacharyakian.
Councilmember Thompson.
Graves and Schultz.
Councilmember Wigder.
Graves and Schultz.
In the voting, Dr. Graves received five votes, so he is reappointed, and Dr. Schultz received three votes, so she is appointed to the Historic Preservation Board.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for your service. And for all those who did not get selected, we have other opportunities to serve, so we appreciate that. And we'll turn now to the Permian and Construction Review Board. We have no applicants, and we are still looking for an electrical engineer. If you are one or know of one, or know of someone who knows of one, please encourage them to apply for this board. We'll turn to responses to workshop information requests. I don't believe we had any, Mr. Ren.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. I saw some people come in after the start of the meeting. Just so you know, anyone who wanted to speak on Item 9F, which was concerning the Parker meeting, the parking meter zone at our beach parks, that has been removed from the consent agenda. We appreciate the feedback we've gotten. It will not be taken up tonight. Council, excuse me, city staff will provide more information. We're going to have more conversation with beach permit holders and residents, so that is not on the consent agenda. So would anyone wish to, would any council member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda, aside from Item 9F, which has already been removed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove Item 9D, similar to the reasons why we removed, I think, we removed the parking meter discussion. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove item 9D, similar to the reasons why we removed, I think, we removed the parking meter discussion. When people ask us to remove something from the consent agenda, I tend to agree. And so, I believe we were asked to remove item 9D from the consent agenda, and so I'd ask that we take that off.
Great. We will take that up at the end of the consent agenda. Any other changes to the consent agenda? Then we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda without items 9D, and for those just walking in, without item 9F concerning the beach parking matter, that is not on the agenda. Do I hear a motion without items 9D?
And the addition of 9K.
Well, I think we're going to take that up afterwards as a, not on the consent. So, no D, no F. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right. All those, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Would any member of the public wish to comment on the consent agenda? 9D will be separate. Seeing no one, we'll take a vote. Please, Ms. Sidens.
Drucker?
Yes.
Naglas?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wigder?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five votes to zero.
Very well. We'll now take up item 9D, Resolution 812025. Would you please read the title?
Resolution 812025, a resolution of the City of Boca Raton, Florida rejecting a recommendation issued pursuant to Section 70.51 Florida statutes, known as the Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act regarding approximately four acres of predominantly submerged real property adjacent to the intercoastal waterway located at 3,000 Northeast 8th Avenue and owned by Northeast 32nd Street LLC, providing for a written decision regarding allowable uses, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Rand?
Staff recommends the adoption of the resolution that formally rejects the recommendation issued by a special magistrate under Section 75.1 Florida statutes regarding 4.04 acres of submerged land at 3,000 Northeast 8th Avenue, owned by Northeast 32nd Street LLC. The background is that in May of 2025, the city's special, this special magistrate issued a non-binding recommendation opining that a 2024 code enforcement order against the property owner for unpermitted landfilling unreasonably burdened the property. The owner attributes the, is the project to a 1957-58 order and suggested that the city's code enforcement order be nullified. Under Florida statutes, the city must act on the special magistrate's recommendation within forty-five days, or it is deemed rejected by operation of law. We are recommending that it be rejected, and I will turn to Mr. Kaler if he needs to add anything with regard to the legalities in this matter.
Sure, just for the council's benefit, the matter is called FLUEDRA, the Florida Land Use Environmental Dispute Resolution Act. It's an opportunity for an informal, non-binding mediation designed to allow government and private property owner to explore some compromise, and the magistrate serves as the mediator, and the council ultimately retains full authority with regard to the magistrate's recommendation to either accept, modify, or reject. The city recommends, the city manager's recommendation is supported by the city attorney's office. And again, if the council doesn't take any action, it's deemed rejected after forty-five days as a matter of law.
Very well. So, rejection, action tonight would actually just give the interested party a faster answer than just running out the clock?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions of staff? I did receive two cards on this, so we'll invite Hope Calhoun and William Swaim to come forward, please.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Just one point of inquiry to Mr. Kaler. So, just to refresh my recollection, adopting the resolution in favor is adopting the recommendation of rejection. So, voting yes is voting for the recommendation of rejection.
Correct. A vote to approve the resolution is rejecting the magistrate's recommendation.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Ms. Calhoun?
Good evening. My name is Hope Calhoun. I am a partner at the law firm of Miskell Backman. I know I'm not a face you all normally see up here, so it's good to see and meet most of you. I do represent, our office, as you probably know, represents the property owner.
And Ms. Calhoun, we know it, but please tell everyone your address.
Address, 14 Southeast 4th Street, Boca Raton, Florida. Thank you. So, we actually are asking that you adopt the recommendation of this special magistrate and vote against the recommendation made by your city manager, supported by your city attorney. I, as you've probably guessed, recently became involved in this matter, and my short time in this, I can see very clearly why the special magistrate ruled as he did. If you read the order, it's very clear, it makes very clear recommendations based on the overwhelming evidence presented at the special magistrate hearing. So, we would ask that the code, the October 7th order be nullified, the special magistrate's code order, and really, this property owner just wants to get on with developing his property and have the permits requested issued. Again, this has been going on for quite some time. We're just trying to get this property eventually to a space that can be developed, as it should be. If you read the order presented by the special magistrate and the recommendation, you'll note that there was, I think, over forty-five pages of evidence presented by the property owner and less than that presented by city staff, and nothing really to support city staff's position. So, we would ask that you would reject the, the city manager's recommendation and find that it is contrary, it is contrary to the intended purpose of Chapter 70 and the actual appeals process. We, as I stated previously, would ask that you vote to adopt the recommendation of the special magistrate so that this property owner can move forward with developing and filling his property first and foremost before doing anything else. Happy to answer questions?
Councilmembers, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Mr. Swaim?
William Swaim, 5455 North, or Via Del Ray, Del Ray Beach, Florida. I'm the managing member of Northeast 32nd Street LLC, the owner of this property for the last six years. And we've been trying to permit this property for quite some time. The property itself originally was high and dry until the mid-1950s, when the subdivision to the west illegally stole the dirt off the property and filled in what's now called Blue Inlet. It was also a former Army of Engineers spoil site that precluded any development of the property, and that's why it hadn't been developed up until now. And that, those spoil easements have been released, and those were for the construction of the intercoastal waterway back in the 1930s. This property's got a little bit of a history. In 2014, we discovered that there were a bunch of international fiber optic lines underneath the property that had been built without any approval of the property owner. The city had issued permits to them to build on this property without the owner's consent. That cost about $3 million worth of litigation costs and about four years, five years of litigation. Additionally, after that was resolved, the city issued permits to my next-door neighbor to build docks and a seawall on the property without the owner's consent. We brought it to the city's attention immediately before the construction got too far along, and the city refused to take any action or to red-tag the property. We applied for a permit 376 days ago, and we are still waiting to get that permit resolved. We went through the mediation process related to the Chapter 70.51, and we got to where I think there is no issues left. I sent an email to Mr. Shad last week to tell me if there's anything left to resolve. I haven't heard back yet. But as far as we're concerned, the mediation was very effective. We cleared out at least ninety percent of the things that were outstanding related to the permits, and we're still waiting to find out if there's anything left. We've tried to, all through this process, for the last literally ten years, we've tried to meet with staff. We've been precluded from meeting with anybody at all on this. And so, I'm asking just to be treated like anybody else, any other property owner in the city of Boca Raton. I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm just asking for what is allowed by the code, which everything we're attempting to do is allowed by the city code as written. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, we will close the public hearing on item 9D, Resolution 812025. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 812025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion? Then Ms. Sidens, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please.
Please.
I had this taken off the consent agenda in part because we were asked to do so, and I think that makes sense to give folks an opportunity to be heard. But also, and this is an idea that I floated earlier today with the city attorney, this is, this FLUEDRA proceeding is new in my experience up here. We've never had something like this brought to us in this manner like this before. And it's part of and connected to a couple of pending cases, pending litigation. And I was wondering if it might make sense for there to be an executive session on this, the larger issue, including the two pending cases that are, where the city has been named as a defendant in, at least to discuss potential resolution of kind of like the global problem, such as it's been described by the landowner. And to do that, I think it, maybe it makes sense, I'm just throwing this out there, to postpone this item right now in order to allow that to happen. That would have a certain effect on the proceeding that was described earlier, but I think it does make sense for us to have a discussion in a settlement context about what the future of this looks like. And so, that's why I raised it. It's why I pulled it off the agenda to ask about that as a possibility.
Comments? Mr. Kaler, just remind us, please, of the procedural timing. If we take no action within forty-five days, we are deemed to deny or to reject the magistrate's recommendation, correct?
Correct. Under the statute, no action within forty-five days is automatically considered rejected by law.
Very good. And this recommendation was made May, what day in May? I thought you might, I thought you might offhand. I'll look, too.
May 16.
May 16. That would take us to the end of June. That would take us, literally, to June 30. Could you talk, Mr. Kaler, about the other two proceedings that Mr. Thompson referenced? Because they're separate from this one discreet FLUEDRA proceeding.
Right. There are three discrete matters. There are two actions pending in circuit court. They're called mandamus actions. And it's asking, property owners asking a court to compel the city to issue two permits. One, to fill in the submerged land, and two, to clear out the trees that are on the non-submerged portion of the land. And certainly, during city attorney reports, can seek authorization to hold executive sessions in those matters, and we can discuss those pursuant to Chapter 286 in a shade meeting. That would then be brought back to you, you know, with notice, so that it would be noticed for the public. But those two actions are pending. And so, there is some overlap. This matter was about the code enforcement case, although it did raise larger issues relating to the issuance of the permit. Without discussion of the other cases, how appropriate is a shade meeting on just this FLUEDRA action? My advice would be that the shade meeting would be limited to the two mandamus actions. Those are the two pending matters that would be appropriate for a shade meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions with Mr. Kaler? Mr. Wigder?
No, just a comment?
Please.
Is that okay? This is about a recommendation to accept or reject a non-binding mediation. So, the rejection of the non-binding mediation does not put either party in a better or worse case. So, I don't understand the need to postpone the item since rejection of the mediation de facto acts to postpone the item. We will still be proceeding with the normal course in due diligence and in due course of what we would always be doing anyway. So, I don't see a reason to postpone the rejection or, you know, rejection or approval of a non-binding mediation. Again, pursuant to Mr. Thompson's point, it's a, you know, this FLUEDRA act. My understanding from these matters, generally without getting into specifics, is that there are state, potentially, and federal waterway issues that are very complicated. And for those reasons, I am not prepared to approve the non-binding mediation due to the complication of those issues. I hope you can appreciate that. I'm not prepared to make such a legal basis or judicial basis on these matters today in a non-binding mediation.
Comments? Mr. Thompson?
I would, I would agree largely that these are complicated matters, and that's probably why there's not been a lot of FLUEDRA proceedings that come to us for an express approval or rejection or whatever. I mean, even just the backup on this was significant. And between a very detailed recommendation by a magistrate combined with a very detailed discussion by our own council, that's just not your average consent agenda item, let's put it that way. I hear what you're saying, Mr. Wigder, and you're not wrong, that a postponement operates as a rejection, but effectively, that will be what the vote is being taken to do right now. So, you can, if the plan is to reject it, you can reject it expressly right now, I guess, or you wait the time. Subject maybe to some agreement by the parties as to extend that deadline about what to do within the forty-five days. I just, to me, this seems like something that calls out for an executive session. And it would be my suggestion that we pursue that, and we do so without taking a position, I think, on this right now. Because I frankly need to have the benefit of the discussion like that in a settlement context, I think, is probably the best way I could describe it. That's where I stand on it.
Mr. Mayor, I know that you all are deliberating, but just a point of information, we can agree mutually, the parties, to extend the forty-five days, so it doesn't make it an automatic rejection, and we're happy to reach that.
All right, please be seated, Ms. Calhoun. Notwithstanding, Mr. Kaler, I have a question for Mr. Kaler. Notwithstanding their kind offer to extend the forty-five day process, are we comfortable that FLUEDRA provides for such a tolling?
The statute would say that if the parties agree, you can extend it. But the matter presented tonight as recommended to the council was to reject, and my understanding was that the question is if the city did not agree, would that be deemed a rejection? If the council directs to enter into an agreement with the other side to keep it open-ended and to allow for an executive session in the related but separate mandamus actions, I can certainly do that, but I would need direction from the council.
Yeah. In light of the separation, I'm more comfortable proceeding tonight with the, with moving on this, knowing that the shade meeting would be limited and that we can take up the issue of those other matters separately. But I'm more comfortable moving forward tonight, and that would give a little more clarity rather than drag out what seems to be, based on my conversations with you and the, and staff's analysis, where we're going to go. Ms. Drucker?
Thank you, Mayor Singer. So, just for a point of clarification, the executive sessions that you're calling are on the two unrelated non-binding issues, not particularly this. Is that correct?
I can't call for anything, but I was suggesting that given this is.
I send rect, suggestion.
Right. It was, this is part of a larger issue that involves two other lawsuits. And I thought a, a global resolution of all of these things, including the pending cases against the city, I'm always happy to have a discussion about that. And I think if there is amount of, if there's interest in pursuing a global resolution, an executive session would be a way of accomplishing that. That's all.
And another point of clarification, that executive session would have to happen within that timeframe, Mr. Kaler?
No, it would not. I, the way it would work is I would verbally request authorization to schedule an executive session at some point in the future. There would be no action taken. Then we would coordinate with the council. I know we have summer schedules. And then at some future date, we'd have a public notice of some future time, but.
So, we could have independently the executive sessions, and we could still move forward on this matter tonight with the recommendation of city manager and city attorney?
Correct.
So, my vote would be to move forward on tonight and not postpone, and hold the executive session at a later time if that's what the council decides.
All right, further comments? All right, so the motion then remains to, to adopt the resolution which rejects the non-binding recommendation of the magistrate. Is there any further? non-binding recommendation of the magistrate. Is there any further discussion? Then Ms. Sidens, please call the roll.
Wigder?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Singer?
Yes.
Knackless?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Motion passes, four votes to one.
Very well, thank you. We're now moving on to resolutions and other business, which is Item 10. Again, I saw some more people come in. I just want to say it one more time. Anyone who came in on Item 9F that has been removed from tonight's agenda. And we'll turn to our government campus partnership opportunity, and I'll turn to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lukasik, our deputy city manager is going to be, provide the presentation, which follows on the discussion we had yesterday afternoon regarding the campus.
Thank you, Mr. Lukasik.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, mayor and council. Good evening. So normally, at this time, we would give you an update as to what's transpiring with the project. We've had two meetings, one in, one on May 27th and one yesterday, where we talked about the interim master plan and where we are in that process, and that was really culminating into a recommendation by staff, partially on behalf of the Terra Frisbee Group, our partners, to have you consider by voice vote approval of the interim master plan. So just to give you a little bit of history, just to make sure we're on the same page. In March, we approved a interim agreement with the Terra Frisbee Group. Part of what that agreement contained was a series of milestones. One of those milestones was the, was the consideration of the approval of the interim master plan. Now, in the negotiation of the interim agreement, the purpose behind the approval of the interim master plan was really to agree upon the basic development parameters of the project. So that, that was going to signal the agreement of some of the basic development goals of the project. So a very limited scope in terms of what the council is considering, which what we're asking you to consider tonight, and it's highlighted on this slide in blue text. So your, the only things that we're asking you to consider tonight are the development program uses, the program development intensities, and the intensities, as well as the general layout of the plan. And you'll see a series of bullets that, bullet points that talk about some of the uses that are included in the plan, as well as the development intensity of those particular uses. So again, today's, today's request for a voice vote approving the interim master plan is really limited to those particular issues. I want to stress and kind of reemphasize the things that council member Wigder brought up last night. He did a great job of explaining in detail what, where we are in the process and how we're moving forward. So you're not approving a development order this evening. You know, we're not approving any development rights. You're not granting any zoning entitlements. You're not guaranteeing any future approvals. It's really restricted to just these particular items this evening. As we go through the summer, we're going through the process of finalizing a master plan and a master partnership agreement. There inevitably will be some changes of the plan, and throughout the summer, we'll be talking to all of you about what those changes are, what sort of things we're working on with our partners with Terra Frisbee, and getting your feedback throughout the summer. But what you're, what we're asking for you tonight is really just limited in scope to those items and those bullet points in blue on this particular slide. So I'm here to answer any questions. Members of the CBRE team are, real estate consultant, as well as members of the Terra Frisbee team are here to answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Drucker?
Thank you, Mr. Lukasik. Thank you, everyone. So more of a comment as we go through this process. I mean, I'm ready to go ahead and get my approval for the interim master plan, but last night, as I do often, I stay up really late, and I was just thinking through some of the discussions that we had, and I'm looking at Mr. Frisbee. I could barely see you, but I want to direct this to you. Thank you for being a great partner to this point in terms of listening to us and to our community and working with staff diligently. So as we continue towards a master plan, you can't have a neighborhood, and that's what I'm calling that area of our city. That's going to be a part of our history for many, many years to come. And a transit-oriented corridor without a mobility hub or a transportation hub. I know we discussed that. I know Ms. Knackless brought it up yesterday, but whatever that looks like needs to be a part of the plan. There's a lot of discussion about parking. Everyone on this dais knows how I feel about parking. Less parking. This is a neighborhood. We want it to be connected to Palmetto Park Road, to Bright Line, to the library, to Meisner Park. We want people to be able to be out of their cars. What creates traffic? People in their cars. What creates traffic? People in their cars. If we built a multimodal neighborhood, less people will be in cars and more people will walk, bike, use other options of multimodality. I've seen this throughout the country, internationally, and in other parts of our own state. So what I say to you as we continue with this process is making sure, and to Mr. Lukasik, that we look at this as a neighborhood. When we look at parking, we don't want parking lots. We want places where people are going to come and spend time. We don't want buildings to be there just stuck without having activation, like we have our Wildflower Park, a park that sits there every day without activation. Very sad. And I know the staff is working diligently to activate that park, and I'm very hopeful, and I know it's going to get done. So as we continue this, we'll continue to listen to our community, obviously to us policymakers that are up here, but understand that what we're trying to create in the downtown is a neighborhood with economic drivers and vibrancies for generations to come. So I appreciate you guys working diligently, staff, the council. We've been working on this for numerous amounts of time, and for all the resident input that we receive this part. Continue to give us your input. Thank you.
Ms. Knackless?
Thank you, Mayor Singer. Yes, I also want to thank staff, want to thank CBRE, our consultants, want to thank Frisbee and Terra groups for really listening to us, listening to the residents. I know that you've spent, residents that have reached out to you, I know you've gotten on the phone with them, you've been face-to-face with them. You will continue to be face-to-face with them, and we're all counting on that. Mr. Lukasik, I mentioned this to you before the meeting, but, and I see the bullet points in blue, but I just also wanted to mention the transit hub, that that, as far as program uses, that that is something that we've given policy direction on, as well as recreation. We've spoken a lot about recreation. It's still not solidified where that's going to end up. We have a couple different plans. We know there will be recreation in the downtown. There will be tennis in the downtown and somewhere else. Whatever recreation that we have will be enhanced, and some of it may be moved off-site, but whatever we have today, we will have enhanced recreation, either downtown or somewhere else. So I just wanted to thank everybody. I'm really excited about what we're going to create together for the future, for generations to come, that will be a timeless place and something that we can all enjoy, and that will be wonderful for all the residents and all the businesses in Boca Raton for many, many, many decades to come. Thank you.
Other comments or questions before we open up the public hearing? Mr. Wigder?
I said enough yesterday, so let me just summarize by thanking my colleagues and staff for the very, very hard work. I mean, especially the last couple months, I've seen tremendous work, Mr. Lukasik and Mr. Brown and the whole team, on really, you know, moving this forward, and of course, Mr. Martin and Frisbee, Terra and Frisbee Group, and your teams respectively. I mean, it's an all-hands-on-deck effort to move a ship this big and complicated, and really to do these improvements. And when you look into what we have in terms of the improvements here, and in terms of the new active recreation, to your point yesterday, Mr. Frisbee, that, you know, that what we have is, instead of a series of random fields, that we have, we will have a series, a master-planned, masterful, world-class park that other cities can be proud of and that we can be proud of, just as, you know, when people come visit here, they will be proud to see this. We talked about, you know, I talked about briefly in 2019, how the Bright Line meeting, you know, that there was such positivity, not only for people to get on the train and go to Miami, but to give people a reason to get off the train and come here. We're never going to be Disney World. We're not going to have to worry about people streaming, you know, here, that it will be, you know, too much of a tourist destination, but to have some economic vibrancy, it's important. It's important for our tax base. It's important for the businesses. It's important for the jobs. It's important for the people that work here to have other economic vibrancy, as you see that Meisner Park is now, you know, 40 years old, in need of some renovation and renewal, and it's, and it's time to activate this space with sustainable neighborhood planning, and I'm really pleased with the way things have gone so far. Like I said, this is not the endpoint, not nearly the endpoint. This is a milestone. This is a checkpoint in the process that will have a series of dozens of checkpoints to make sure things are proceeding in the right way. I think there's still going to be a lot of refinement. There will be continuous refinement of the plan. Now, once we get this finalized, there'll be more specified negotiation financially on the economics, on the benefits to the community and the people and the taxpayers. That's common. That's going to take some time as well, but we're proceeding in the right direction, and I'm pleased with it, you know, with the way that staff's handling this, CBRE and our partners. This was the intent when we, when we did rank them first. Thank you.
Further comments? Mr. Thompson?
I was just going to say that we do have a public comment portion. Yeah, I'd like to hear from them, if that's okay.
Very well, and I'll just say something leading into our public comment. This is the, I think, the 23rd time this has been noticed on an agenda since last year. We had considerable discussion yesterday. I know some people are new to the audience who didn't hear it. What we, and we talked about many things, recreation and all these different components. This is a milestone as we move forward in potential partnership, as it says on the screen, and as Mr. Lukasik said, this is not a development order. This is nothing binding. This is just a preliminary step to make sure that we are aligned with our potential partner, and we will continue to have more public outreach. There are another, there's additional public outreach planned, more feedback. We'll have more meetings throughout the course of this over the coming months and beyond, and this list on the board is not exhaustive, as was discussed. There will be recreation. We've had considerable talks about augmenting and moving recreation to additional sites. So with that, I have two cards, or actually one card only for this item, that anyone else who wishes to speak after Judy Morrow can do so. Please give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes.
I picked some more organic mangoes from my tree for the nice mayor and council people. I'm here to talk...
Thank you. Wait till you get to the microphone, please, Ms. Morrow.
Yes. My name is Judy Morrow. I live at 1305 Northeast 5th Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida. I've lived here 35 years, and I always come here to speak about tennis, because tennis is for the residents that have been using it. And I've collected 404 petitions on people that want tennis to stay downtown. Today, I made a little booklet, and I'm going to give it to Fran, and then she can share it with the council and the mayor. And it's, we really, in order to make it live, play, work at the project, the 30 acres, you need some active things. Tennis is one of the most active things now on the 30 acres. So we want to keep it active there. So we want, the one option is eight tennis courts on the government center and eight courts in Meadows Park Pool, because like Yvette said, the future, 1 in 13 people in the United States play tennis. And what do you call it? Yesterday, at the tennis courts, I took a picture of four ladies that played tennis, and these four ladies are very special. I tried to get them to come here, but because of their age, they're not able to. But they play tennis three times a week for an hour and a half, and I have their pictures in here. This is Claire. She has played 21 years at Boca Raton Tennis Center. This is Peg. She has played 50 years at Boca Raton Tennis Center. She is like the longest player still playing. She's 89 years old. Next to her is Frida. Frida is 90 years old, and she's been playing at Boca Raton Tennis Center on Northwest 2nd Avenue for 40-plus years. And then Sharon, who said she might come tonight, but she's not able to, has played there for 30 years. And these women love to play there. They are a beautiful example of tennis helps people, according to the Mayo Clinic Study, 25 years, and also the Copenhagen 25-year study. Tennis helps you live 9.7 years longer. So these two women in here are perfect examples of that, in my opinion. And also in here, it's not just tennis that I care about, although that's what I talk about. Also, I care about playgrounds. And in the booklet, they have some outstanding playgrounds that have tennis courts and playgrounds. They have an expression swing...
Ms. Morrow, could you please conclude?
Yeah, and it says a lot of cool things that I'm going to give to you to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the downtown campus? Mr. Pearlman? Don't forget to get your racket, Mr. Morrow.
John Pearlman, 498 Northeast A Street. Yesterday, in response to my request for current information about the working financial deal between the city of Boca Raton and Terra Frisbee, Mayor Singer stated that the financial terms proposed by Terra Frisbee had been posted to the website since the submittal on October 24, 2024, and Mr. Brown stated in response that at this point, there are no new financial terms. The mayor described the financial terms posted on October 24, 2024 as, quote, "financial terms proposed by Terra Frisbee", because this is exactly what they are. One-way numbers sent from the offices of Terra Frisbee for ground rent numbers that they themselves came up with to pay for this land, without any input, response, comment, or negotiation from the city of Boca Raton. This is what Terra Frisbee says they're going to pay. End of discussion. This was from over seven months ago, during which time a developer was selected. Two iterations of an interim plan have been gone through, iterations which did not include any financial updates or evolution presented to the citizens, and does not include the most recent financial term sheet that was briefed to council members prior to the May 27 meeting for consideration, along with the second iteration of the interim master plan. This new term sheet contains new and updated financial terms to the deal, which includes the possibility of the sale of condominiums on the land, which would require the sale of public land, not a ground lease as was contained in the October 24 financials. Based on this new term sheet, Mr. Thompson stated on May 27 that now the sale of condos are, quote, "at least a possibility, if not a certainty." Furthermore, at the meeting yesterday, speaking about where this deal is today, Mr. Wigder stated, quote, "Part of the land that Frisbee Terra is using for this project is their land, so in theory, there could be potential condominiums on their land." That's how he said there. Condos being built, or no condos being built, Mr. Wigder is now recognizing that the new terms of this deal are making the land that Frisbee Terra is using, quote, "as their land," meaning no longer the public land of Boca Raton, meaning a sale of this land. Section 1363 of the Boca Code lays out the conditions and protocol that the city must follow if selling public land. One, city-owned property shall not be sold until an ordinance authorizing the sale has been duly advertised and adopted, and must contain the amount of the consideration and a statement of the terms and conditions, if any, of the sale. Two, the purchase price shall not be less than the fair market value of the property, according to an appraisal report made as of less than six months before the date of introduction of the ordinance. No appraisal has been conducted, and no ordinance has been adopted to authorize this sale, and no amount of consideration and information on the terms and conditions of the sale have been presented to the public. I am calling for the city now to abide by the code as it relates to the sale of public land, which it has not up until this point, and I am requesting that the most recent term sheet on the financials, as presented to council members prior to May 27 relating to this second interim master plan, be posted on the government website immediately in a conspicuous invisible location, not in a hidden and difficult location.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
As for the 24th, October 24 financials. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Let's go Boca Raton.
Hello, I'm Evan Bennett, and I live at one fifty-two Northwest Twelfth Avenue. I want you to, as you're thinking about this thirty acres, I want you to keep in mind the adjacent spaces that are near it. The fifth diagonal, for example, almost every house on there is for sale currently. Apparently, people are concerned about what's going to happen across the street. Also, the Fourth Avenue corridor, which is already very, very crowded with Boca Raton Christian School and all of that traffic, it's almost impossible to cross during busy times. You're going to add traffic to that, so we need to make sure we're considering that. But also, along the Palmetto Park corridor, there's been discussion of townhomes at the corner of Twelfth and Palmetto, for example, or the development of the public space and where the public supermarket is now, and to also additional high-rise buildings in that space. There's a cumulative effect that begins to build as you put three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office space or nine hundred and twelve residential units. That will be a cumulative effect, and I'm hoping you're paying attention to the infrastructure. Currently, there's one fire station that has a, an engine and a rescue that covers all of the Palmetto area, including I ninety-five. There's one station at Station One that has to cover all of the Glades area, including Florida Atlantic University and the interstate. So as you're adding more of that in, we need to make sure that we're planning for the rest of the city, not just the thirty acres that is here. I have my own individual problems with this. I question, is twenty-six thousand to thirty thousand square feet of a city hall going to be enough? Or will we be running up and having to rent office space from owners of the, or developers of the property in due time as the city grows? Will the removal of the police station and creation of a substation in its place be sufficient for what the police department needs? And I'm, I agree with Ms. Drucker that it's really important to find ways to think about reducing traffic, but at the same time, we need to remember the city hall needs to be open to all of the people in Boca Raton, not just the people that will live in this space. So we need to make sure we're providing the infrastructure, the parking, the accessibility of that space as it exists. Make sure that follows on. So thanks for your attention.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call.
My name is Patty Dervishy. I live at four twenty Northeast tenth, there's Boca Raton. I'd like to address a city council. We've been coming here weeks after weeks for these meetings, and it seems that everything has fallen on deaf ears. The reasons we elected you have seemed not to have transpired. It seems every single time something comes up, you're on the side of the developer and not the citizens. There have been things that have been deceptive, city council members saying that people will walk around this area. They're not going to walk. They're going to be driving cars. The cars are already there. I was on Palmetto between Federal and, um, right on Palmetto by Federal the other day. Cars were lined up all the way down the street. You're not having regard for Boca Square, Old Floresta, Palm Beach Farms. All these people that I've spoken to are absolutely against this. You have been giving away our parks, Sanborn and other parks, even our city property. It is unjust and unfair to us. So it just appears that you're seeing how far you can push us, how much you, that you can push the citizens to get more for the developers. Well, I have to tell you, today is the day it stops. We are going to get organized. We're going to elect new city officials. We are going there, we have a website now that we would like all these people who are concerned and who haven't come to these meetings to go to. And we'd like to hear from them. Before you go further, we'd like it put on a ballot. And the website that they can go to is saveboca25, year twenty-five, at gmail dot com. You'll be hearing from us. We wish and pray that you take us into account. We don't want this development at all. So we hope you do it. If not, we will be very involved. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Alexandra Abello. It's not the first time I see you guys, and thank you for accepting our presence here. Anyhow.
Please give your address.
Oh, it's four ninety-eight Southwest Twelve Terrace, Boca Raton, Florida, three three four eight six. I just have one proposal, and I think we, the people, can agree with that. Let's leave the park the way it is. Mayor, if you want a Taj Mahal, or you want a palace, you want a, whatever it is, a temple, we can build that for you guys, but do not touch the recreational part for the people who really need. One after another, you guys are not representing we, the people. If I ask right now the we, the people, if they want with this project, what will be we, the people, the answer?
No.
Please.
No. So you are our representatives. You cannot do what the developers who give us lots of money, right? Do it. We, the people, have the voice. We need for you guys to come down to earth, and please be mindful. You are destroying, you are destroying the most beautiful city. Boca Raton was very privileged for the beautiful architecture. Now it's monster after monster. Now you're going to take more spaces and build up and up and up. Now, I will agree with you, Mr. Mayor, if you give us, to each one of us, the we, the people, a plane, a little plane for flying around, because there's not going to be way to move around with cars, neither with horses. So I don't know what you want to do. Why, my question is why you guys don't want to listen to we, the people, that we are against it? It's a desperation point. It's so horrible to lose, to lose all the parks and then build and build and build more monsters. That's my proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call? Last call? All right, thank you. We've closed the public hearing on this. We'll entertain, well, more discussion. Mr. Brown, and first, I appreciate everyone who comes forward. As I said, we've had this noticed twenty-three times, and I see some people in this audience more often than others. I see some only a few times. I encourage you to watch the videos, to look at the website, and actually look at the plans, because some of the things that have been discussed just are not true. For example, the recreation, we've had considerable discussion, and yesterday it was laid out with a map of how there will be more green space downtown, not to mention the four softball fields that are underway, hopefully with our friends from the Beach and Park District next month, and the tennis courts to come at Meadow Park. So an increase in recreation. In terms of density and height, again, this was the least dense of all the plans. And as Mr. Wigder pointed out yesterday with the math, and has been on our city website, part of this is the why, because we're not only placemaking and creating a vibrant space that has community space and city hall, and plenty of green space, and improving it, and connecting to other parts of the downtown, there is a net present value in the immediate term in the hundreds of millions of dollars for taxpayers, and over the life of the long-term lease that's still under discussion, billions of dollars. So there is a reason that staff didn't, that city didn't move forward years ago with a more expensive city hall. Finally, the one point, and I'll ask Mr. Brown to fill in, on the city hall space, I appreciate your concern. We discussed this at great length yesterday. There were original plans for much larger city hall. The idea was to keep the public-facing functions downtown, which is why you see a smaller footprint. There would be other city space used elsewhere for, for back of office, not as public-facing, and trying to separate out the public-facing functions from the non-public-facing functions to create greater vibrancy. Mr. Brown, anything you care to add?
In addition to that, we are planning a new police facility in the northwest part of town, where the, next to the Spanish River Library, that will be the police station. The substation downtown will provide what substation services would be. You'd be able to do the fingerprinting there, file a report, get a copy of a report, see an officer about a concern. The main police station would be out on Spanish River Boulevard. Also, there, there seems to be a percent, when Mr. Frisbee was talking about land that they already control, it is land that they have a contract on that is owned by a private property owner, not the city. So they are not referring at this point to a transaction that involves city property. The requirements of the code with regard to the disposition of city property will be followed in due course at the time that that action is necessary.
And just two other notes. On the police location, that's something that staff has been planning for many years independent of a new construction or a public-private partnership. Staff has long desired to move the police station other than the location it is now. And finally, I appreciate that people are very passionate about that city. I share your passion. We all don't, always don't agree on the same thing, but there are a lot of people who may not be here tonight who have different views from you. There may be people here who are tonight, who are here tonight who have different views. So we appreciate that. We've tried our best to govern for the collective good, and there are reasons that we've laid out, and not everyone has to agree, but I, I'm prepared to move forward on the next step as we continue to unfold, and public input has made this proposal better, and I think it will continue to make it better, so we look forward to more of it. Any further comments? Mr. Thompson?
Yes, please, Mayor. Thank you. For months now, I have been saying just about the same thing. Whatever happens here in the government campus should be done suitably, should be done sensibly, and should be done responsibly. Suitably, I think anybody recognizes that our city hall, as it exists now, is in pretty bad shape, and we want to have suitable working conditions for our staff. For too long, they've been made to work in a building that roof leaks and it floods at times, and it's just, it's simply, it's dated. It is dated. And so we want to have good, decent space for our folks to work, and I think everybody can understand that. But we also need to make sure that what we're doing is done sensibly, meaning we're not wanting Taj Mahal-type facilities. I want to make sure that anything that we have here is done in an efficient and good use of space while also not being over the top. So that's the sensible part. But then also, beyond just the government facilities themselves, there's a lot of land we're talking about here, and whatever is done with that land, I am adamant that it be used responsibly. Also, for months, I have been saying that, as we started having this discussion about a government campus redevelopment, I've been saying that all of the plans that had been submitted to us by all of the proposers were simply too much, for my opinion, in my opinion. They were too tall. They had too many residential units. It had too much traffic. There was too much displacement or disruption of the recreation that exists on the site right now. And right now, I think it's by my math, not even by my math, by the math, there's proposed, this plan calls for one point five million square feet of buildings to be built on these thirty acres. That's a lot. And I've been saying for months, too, that while we do need new government facilities, there are other ways of accomplishing that beyond necessarily the way that we're seemingly moving forward towards doing today. There are other ways. It doesn't have to be done exactly this way. And what makes this so different than your average development is that this is public land. This is thirty-plus acres of public land. We own it. We all own it. Everybody in this room, if you live in the city of Oka, you own this. And so I think that makes it all the more important that we do this the right way, the right way. And it comes down to kind of some fundamental questions that I had mentioned the last time we had this discussion, which are, should public land, including parkland, that exists there now, should it be monetized? And should public land, including parkland, be sold potentially for the purposes of building condominium units? And if you can get past that, if the answer's to that, I'm not sure what the answers to that are, but if you get past that, then you have to dig down and see, is this what we're talking about here? Is this plan, is this going to be a good deal for the city? And right now, I just, I, I think there are too many questions in my mind regarding whether the question, the answers to all of those questions are, are, are yes, such that we should move forward. So for example, like, I've been saying, too, for months, this seems like the timelines on this are really, really tight. We are pushing forward very, very quickly on this project. That wasn't, in my view, I don't think we needed to do that. I said a few months ago that we shouldn't necessarily push so fast, but, you know, here we are. There's, I have questions as it relates to the phasing. If anybody's been paying attention, they see that this project is built into a series of phases. And if we're going to go down this road, are we satisfied that the phase, like the first phase, is it do enough? Does it do enough to create a place so that there's some reason for people to come there? The question, too, I think, relates to if the tenants in the early phases, as proposed now, they're going to be living in a construction zone for a long time, potentially for years, and that could create problems down the road. Is that, does that make sense? On the civic and community side of, of this proposal, can the program as part of the Phase One component support the civic and community components that are being built? We had this, we had this discussion last time. We're going to be asked to pay for the city buildings. Part of this plan calls for us, the city, to pay for the city buildings and the city Even if the revenue projections come true, the revenue projections, as they're currently projected, don't start flowing until years down the line. And so we're going to be in a position, we're going to be asked to pay a lot of money, tens, maybe hundreds of millions of dollars, to pay for government buildings without any real guarantee that the money comes in, because they're all predicated on phases that haven't even been built yet, and won't be built for years. On the retail component, I think there's, it, I'm not sure, or maybe the question is, are we sure that it creates kind of a critical mass such that it becomes successful? If, there's going to be a retail component, we want it to be successful. The rent projections are based on successful, you know, retail component there, and it may be difficult to attract quality retail tenants, I think, if it's, if it's not at a critical mass. And also, retail like this one would require a lot of pre-leasing prior to a construction loan being closed on. Is, when will that happen? How long will that take? We talked about, somebody mentioned earlier, the potential for the residential component to be condominiums. What is the mixture of rentals versus condos? I don't know that. What percentage, if any, will be affordable? I don't know that. I just, there's similar question as it relates to the condos. There need to be a bunch of pre-sold units in order to get a construction loan to build that. When will that happen? How long will that take? There's just a lot of questions left, and that's even setting aside the really, really fundamental questions about what we should be doing with this land and should it be used in this fashion. I have questions about the parking. There's, one of our consultants pointed out the fact that on every public street, with the exception of Second Avenue, there's on-street parking, every single one. Right now, we're being asked to pay for a lot of this infrastructure, meaning the city's going to have to build that street. If we build that street, are we paying for the parking that's going to support everything there? Should the city be paying for that? I just, to me, it seems like there's so many questions, it overwhelms the ability to move forward in my mind. I could go on and on. I have, there's a lot of questions, I think, and those questions, to me at least, overwhelm my ability to be able to move forward and approve this at the moment. Because there's so many questions left, I, I have more. I've, I've more written down that I, I'm not going to get into, apart from saying that we've been asking our staff to do really tough work over really tight timelines for a long time now, to the point where it's, it's, I can sense that it's having, you know, a significant impact on, on, on their job, and they're working around the clock on this, and I appreciate that. But there's just, I don't know, there's just too much, too fast, that is going to prevent me from being able to support. me from being able to support this tonight. And I'll leave, I guess, with this, is that, you know, this is our land. Somebody told me that this is public land and thus is sacred land. It is public land, and we are all the landowners of it. And I want to make sure that this is done in a responsible way. And the number of questions that I have related to this, even just this interim master plan, will prevent me from supporting it at this point, so I'm going to be voting no on this interim master plan.
I'll respond, and I may ask if Mr. Thompson will allow a question of him. I share a different view. We shared a different view from the beginning when the majority of us favored the plan that was the least dense, the least intense, did not have 3.5 million square feet of mixed development, and also had that other proposal that was favored by one of our colleagues, to whom I'll ask the question, who did favor the 3.5 million square feet, the proposal, at least the doing business with the proposer who had proposed the higher building heights and the 3.5 million square feet, and offered a lower value per unit than what's being offered here. I can get some of these concerns, all of which have not been fleshed out and will still be working on, as we've been working diligently. And staff has been working diligently, but I believe they're competent. I've heard one of us say that we should have trust in staff, and I do. I trust that they can handle what the council set forward as a priority. Mr. Thompson, you'd asked, if you'll yield for the question, you said that you've got concerns, you think there's a better way. I've now heard new concerns that I didn't hear back several months ago. I've not heard what you would suggest we do instead of a P3.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor, and I'll reiterate. We had this, a similar discussion last time where I had to reiterate, going back to at least to February, I think, what my thought process was and my comments were when we were ranking potential proposers. And I asked all of them, if you recall, and I imagine you do, I asked all of them, I said to all of them, "All of your plans are too big. All are too intense. All are too dense. All are too tall." That's what I told them. All of them were. And I had asked all of them, if you recall, and I imagine you do, how, if they would be flexible in what they were going to want to build in order to accommodate our desires for what we want to have built there. And all of them said yes, okay? Including the one you keep referencing, not sure why. And the reason why that's important is because from the outset, I've been telling all of the proposer, not just at the public meetings, but in meetings with them, this is way too much. All of them, I've been telling that, this is way too much, going back months. So none of this is new. I did not, and I'll reiterate again, because you brought this up last time.
I tried to correct myself this time, yes.
I'll reiterate again that I had used, I developed an analogy, which everybody on the dais basically used at one point or another, the dance partner analogy. I said at this phase, when we're picking a partner, we're not picking a plan. The reasoning behind the analogy was, we're not deciding what dance we're going to dance yet, we're deciding what partner we want to dance with. And then we, we're going to decide, because we're the city, we're going to decide what that dance looks like, what is going to work, what makes sense for us. And so I was not, at that point, choosing a plan. I'll say it again, I was not picking based on the plan. What I said was, all of these conceptual plans are too big, and there needs to be flexibility in order to bring them way down in order to satisfy my concerns. So, now for the second time, I'll say, I was not picking a plan, I was picking a partner. The partners had assured us that they would have flexibility in making changes. I appreciate the fact that Tara Frisbee has made some changes to this plan, I suppose, but I reiterate, it remains too tall, too many units, too much traffic, too much displacement. Those concerns remain. They made some changes, to their credit, and I appreciate that, but not enough to satisfy those concerns, okay? Your question, and I said this from the beginning, the very day that we had made the selection or made ranked our proposers, I said, "Much of this need not be done in this way. Much of this could be done through a bond." Go back, and somebody referenced, go back and watch the meetings. Same is true here. Go back and watch the video. In the video, I said, typically, a city like ours could do this in a different way. We could have a lot of the costs here. The idea behind a P3, let me step back a second. The idea behind a P3 is that you can help offset the original cost of construction by having a partner help you do it and by having some other assets around the development. Unfortunately, that's not how it's proceeding in this case. We are being asked to allocate the money at the outset to pay for the government facilities, to pay not just for the City Hall, but for the community center and for the recreation, and, as it stands now, for the infrastructure. That's a lot for us to be asked to pay for out of our pocket right now. And that's not typically how a P3 is structured, as far as I can understand it. And I had said back then, there are other mechanisms to create the government facilities that are both sensible and suitable, but that can still be responsible, responsible to the 30 acres of land that we have here. I simply just don't think that this is that thing. So I guess the short answer to your question, Mayor, is I would refer you back to my comments in February, February 24th, I believe was the date, where I outlined the other ways that we could help accomplish this.
Bond is what I took from that. Thank you. Ms. Knackless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would just like to respond, but I also want to first say to everyone here, we are listening. And actually, just sitting here as we're speaking, I'm getting emails from residents saying, "Thank you for listening to us tonight." So we are listening to you. Anyone who reaches out to me, if you give me your phone number, you know I call you back. And there are people sitting in this room that know that I will call you back, I will respond. We do listen to what you're saying and have from the beginning. And actually, something that has been asked for from the beginning has been recreation. And, Mr. Thompson, I'm sorry, but Tara Frisbee was the only proposer that showed flexibility in the ranking before we ranked. The partner you wanted claimed they would be flexible. However, they were not flexible until the night before the ranking. And I know that because I met with them either weekly or every other week, and I gave them the same information that I gave to all proposers. We need to keep recreation in the downtown. They wanted no recreation in the downtown, yet that was the dance partner that you thought was the most, the perfect dance partner.
Ms. Knackless, if you're yielding for a question, direct your comments to the chair, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not asking a question. I'm just stating for the record that that was the dance partner that was chosen by one of us, that seemed the best dance partner, yet that was a dance partner that wasn't listening to the residents, that wasn't listening to us when we were telling them what we wanted. We didn't want 200 feet of height. We didn't want a million square feet. And it wasn't until the day before we were doing the ranking, when they came in, and I really encourage you to all go back and listen to those meetings, which were in early February, that the day before the ranking, suddenly, they would be flexible. They weren't flexible the entire time. Tara Frisbee, on the other hand, when we made comments, they listened, they reacted. There are a lot of questions. I 100% agree with you, Mr. Thompson, there are a lot of questions. Staff has told me that they are excited about this, about this development, that this is probably the biggest thing they're ever going to be working on while they're working for the city. And nobody has told me that they're overwhelmed. You know, everybody in any job that you're doing, when you're doing a job well done, everybody is a little stressed. I was an operating room nurse for many years, and there were very many stressful moments in the operating room. But we work through it, we always get through it, and we work hard, and that's what our staff is doing now. But in no way have we answered all the questions. Tonight is a step in the process of what's next. And it has the potential to be a wonderful, amazing, timeless place. And I agree that there are a lot of questions, but I don't agree that four months ago, that another proposer was going to be flexible and that one of our council members, Mr. Thompson, I'm sorry, that, you know, you want to kind of backtrack and say that, you said everything was too tall and too much, yet you still went with a proposer that had no flexibility. So I just don't understand where all this is coming from. I'm sure you're going to disagree with me now, but it just seems like there's a lot of backtracking now. And I just want to set for the record, I think everyone should go back and listen, and then reach out to us, because I will tell you exactly what was said in every meeting that I had with any of the proposers.
Okay, thank you. Please, if you'll hold your applause. I'm sure you want to respond, Mr. Thompson. I'll give you a chance. I do want to turn to the right side of the dais, too, so, because we, I don't want it to become more a rehash of February. I asked an earnest question based on some comments. I'm prepared to move forward, but I still want to have anyone else who wants to speak before we vote. Please.
Thank you. So, a lot to digest. First and foremost, I just want to address a couple of things, and then I'll get into my decision on why I will move forward on the plan. We provide a lot of respect to this community because we were elected by the community. So please don't threaten us on the dais. I think it's in poor taste, I think, the comments earlier she left. Also, Ms. Avala, this is not the first time, this is the second time, that you've accused us of taking money for developers. I think, I lead an incredibly honest, and I give a lot to this job, so I don't appreciate you saying that we are taking money from developers, and I think the last time you said we were taking bribes. And to Ms. Patty Duvalay, don't threaten us, we're working together, we're all trying to do the best that we can for our community. I'm also a resident, I'm also a taxpayer, and I serve in this part-time job, and I give it my all. So I don't like threats, and I don't like people accusing me of bribery. So I'm going to put that out. So please don't bring that into the chamber. Okay, so I'm a little perplexed with some of the conversations that we're having today, Mr. Thompson, and I'll address that to you, because we were having meetings, and for all of you here, I know that people think we just show up to the dais. There is a lot that happens, that we meet, you could check our calendars, we're meeting with the people that propositioned all of these. We had open forum meetings here. We met with all the proposers multiple times. We meet with staff. We meet every day. We meet with the city attorney, we meet city managers. We do a lot of our due diligence. So then we're up here that we're trying to make the best decision. So this plan that we ended up ranking first out of the four plans that were presented, because we always talk about two, but there was really four plans, it's not even half of what the original plan was. And to an agreement, Ms. Knackless, the flexibility that the dance partner that we used, they were very flexible in our conversations with them. We would say, "This is what's happening," and they would make changes. And if you've been following this, and if this is your first meeting, I encourage you to go back and watch the meetings. This plan has evolved so much because we've had so much community input, and we continue to make changes as we go, to the point that we've reduced the intensity and density, which, by the way, I'm against because of my transit hat. A true transit-oriented area would have more density, less parking. So I'm a little perplexed with some of the comments coming now that we're moving too fast, that we're moving in the wrong direction. I agree, there are a lot of questions that are still being asked of us, asked of you. There's going to be more public input to come, but I'm a little perplexed as we can sit up here and say, "Well, we can't support this interim plan," when we've only been talking it for 23 other meetings, and we've only been talking about this for over two or three years from our strategic planning sessions. So just a little perplexed as to why Mr. Thompson can't vote for this plan, but we all have our vote and we all decide what we want to do. And I guess the bigger question for me, and maybe you don't have to answer, is, why did you rank them first? So anyways, I'm going to move forward and I'm going to approve the interim master plan. And I thank the Tara Frisbee book for being a good dance partner with us, and the community for joining in our dance.
Mr. Breyer, then, Mr. Thompson, can you give a second go around? We can go around if we need to, again.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments, everything that we've been listening to from the public for the past several months, going back and watching the meetings from the past several years. I've really, you know, come to respect everyone's care for the charm of this community. Certainly, it's something that we're trying to enhance. But I've said this, I think, well before we even got into this final, we started choosing proposers, can anyone imagine Boca Raton without Meisner Park? Meisner Park's a P3. Does anyone really, you know, can anyone imagine not going there for special events, for the centennial of our city or whatnot? It's a special place that we've all come to love, depend on. Of course, if you type in to the internet, "What are the three best things to do in Boca Raton?", number one is Meisner Park, maybe number two is Gumbo Limbo, and, you know, so we have a beautiful park system, and this plan enhances that. From the 1960s, which I referenced before, you know, there was a discussion when they built the City Hall here, not here, right, we're not at City Hall, to Mr. Thompson's point, City Hall is in such disrepair, we can't even have meetings there for years. So it must be changed. But the point is, the parks that are currently planned, the parks that were planned in the 1960s, were not mashed or planned, it's just a series of parks that were dropped in. So there's this random land that's just sitting there. It is utilized by people, rightfully so, to throw a ball or whatnot, but it's not part of a mashed or planned park. It's just vacant land that's dropped in. Now we have an opportunity, right, to plan something properly with the public input that has 20 different pocket parks and different recreations, not catering to one stakeholder, but catering to everybody. We have the opportunity to do this. And the amount of public land, the amount of actual, and to, you know, Mr. Frisbee and the developers' points, they've increased the recreational area so that the active green space, not just the public accessible space, which is more than 70% of all the land, 70%, that's more than we have now. What we have now is a series of disjointed public buildings, a series of, a sea of parking lots, you know, with no cohesiveness, with no planning at all, just stuff that's been dropped in over the last 60 years. The city's expanded in the last 60 years, right? It's not just downtown. The City Hall was the center of our city geographically. It's not anymore, right? So now, it's not that this civic center is just the City Hall center, right? It's really like the cultural heart of our city, right? And that's what we're working on improving here, that we're going to have Meisner Park on the east and, you know, Centennial Park or Memorial Park on the west, and, you know, a bridge connecting the two so we can have a true cultural heart of this city. And I'm in favor of doing that. Unfortunately, you know, with the other councilman's comments about the questions and things like that, there were so much misconceptions and misstatements on that, I don't have enough time, and I talk a lot, everyone knows that, I don't have enough time to go through all the misstatements that were made, okay? Because they were just plain wrong, okay? The idea of choosing this as a milestone is that we are then, and I said this maybe six times in the last 10 meetings, okay, we are then going to finalize the negotiations, finalize the financials. That would include a financial plan. The financial plan, the discussion of the financial plan, which Mr. Zervis and his team were working on, is a milestone that's listed there to discuss those things. Those things will include public financing potentially. Why? Because it's cheaper. Because it's cheaper for us, the taxpayers, rather than having the developer take out 10% money, if we can help do this with a contract and potentially with public financing at 5% money, we're going to save our taxpayers money. Hundreds of millions of dollars, we're going to save them. And the one thing that all the previous council members said in 2019, including you, was that in 2019, that $200 million of paying to redo this stuff was too much burden on the taxpayers. And I agree with you. It's too much money just for the taxpayers to pay for it. So here we have an opportunity to plan this over the next many, many months and years to plan this right. As I said yesterday, the Phase Three portion of this plan contemplates the movement of the police station. The police station cannot be cannot be moved until a new one is built, obviously, for security reasons and things like that, okay? Which means, we have time, still. The phase one and phase two of this plan are the things that will be the economic drivers, we're going to be working collectively from this point to the end, to make sure those are done right, those are done responsibly, those are done fiscally and financially to the benefit of the city and the taxpayers. But as I said yesterday, for, for parcel three, we have time, and maybe the market's going to be a little different then. So, future councils will be, you know, will be deciding, will be working on this, too. So, this is a conversation that started in 2000, I guess 17 it was, with a previous council, it's gone through iterations of council, it's going through this council, and the next council as well, will be continuing to work on this for the benefit of the taxpayers, and that's what we're doing here, to do the best possible thing, so we can have a new beautiful centennial park that's activated, that everyone can enjoy, like, like Meisner Park, it could be the new Meisner Park, and people are going to enjoy this, like Ms. Drucker said. I'm in favor of moving forward with, with those things, because it's important to the community, it's important to the future. I had a meeting today with a, with someone who moved to Boca from Los Angeles after COVID, and, and they moved for all the reasons that one would think, they just love it down here, there's a hybrid work environment, all those things. And obviously, when I talked to him about the downtown, he was so excited, he was so excited, he goes, you know, you're doing something for us, you're doing something for us, because Boca's been notorious for losing all those people, the gap years, right? People go to college here at FAU, they can't afford to stay here, they can't afford to live here, so they leave. And then, with God's help, maybe they can afford to come back, okay? And we've been blessed, in my life, to be able to come back here and raise our family. But those gap years, he said, you know, you're doing something that's going to be a walkable, mixed-use downtown, young people are going to want to be there, those gap years, from '22 to '44, they're going to want to be there, and that's something that's worth planning for, because you're planning for the future of their city and our children, not just ourselves. And I'm in favor of doing that. And so, for those reasons, you know, I'm prepared to move forward with this milestone, and be very diligent, as Mr. Brown said, in 2017, 2019, and yesterday, this is the beginning of a very detailed review and regulatory process, where those questions, impacts fees, level of service, concurrency, land dedication stuff, you know, all those things are going to be, and they're going to have to be answered and paid for. But everything is for the financial and the general welfare of the people of our city for the next, you know, decades, and I'm in favor of doing that. Thank you.
All right, well, we've had a lot of discussion, actually probably need a motion on the floor, so I'll move that we direct staff to proceed by informing our partner that we are ready to move forward on this iteration of the interim master plan.
Mayor, before we do that, may I respond to a series of things?
I was going to give you the first response back, right after that, but procedurally, we should get a motion going, so.
Second.
All right, very good.
Siri didn't get that.
And then, Mr. Thompson, I guess some of those were rhetorical, maybe they're not, but you can have the first go around on the second bite, or first bite on the second go around.
I, hopefully it'll be the last go around, but here, I mentioned a bunch of questions before that I had about this whole process. I have a few more. In the comments that were just made by my colleagues, why was there so much discussion of other proposers, of other plans? Why is there so much discussion about my comments, my questions? Why is there so many, so many comments about me? And I think I know the answer why, but the truth is, that I can be criticized, questioned, attacked, I don't care, I sign up for that, I can handle it. But what needs to happen is that these questions that we've raised, that the public has raised, they're unanswered, they are fundamental, and they are critical, and I think they deserve to be addressed. And until they are, I'm not prepared to move forward on this. That's it.
Any further comments? I will answer one. The reason I ask the question is because I, I respect your, the views you have stated now, and respect the questions you've raised. I was asking, I asked initially because you said there was another way, and the answer, I think, after a while, was a bond. So, I don't favor, based on the fact that that would almost certainly increase the mileage rate, I don't favor that, and I think that was the direction that we'd been giving in exploring a public-private partnership for years. In any case, I think we've made our positions known tonight, they may have changed over time, and they may change yet again, we will see. But this plan will continue to evolve with public input, and I think that's a good thing. So, for those reasons, I'm ready to just say yes on the motion to direct staff to move forward on this interim plan, and so we can move forward. Is there any further discussion? Then, all those in favor of moving forward, please say, on the motion, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Thompson.
Thank you. Yes, four to one, Mr. Thompson, in the negative. All right. Thank you. We actually, and we can take a short recess, I just want to clarify where we go. At the outset, I said we would take up Resolution 842025 as item 9K, I actually meant as item 10B, as an additional resolution. So, we will take that up after our short recess of five minutes. We'll see you in five. Thank you.
And we have resumed the city council meeting at 8:24. We'll now take up item 10B, which was previously referred to as 9K, but it is the resolution we've added, 842025. Ms. Sidens, would you please read the title?
Resolution 842025, "A Resolution of the City of Boca Raton Authorizing the City Manager or Designee to Execute a Merchant Services Agreement with Bank of America, Providing for Severability, Providing for Appealer, Providing an Effective Date."
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Bank of America currently provides merchant services to the city pursuant to our participation agreement with the state. And Bank of America has provided a new merchant services agreement to provide for the continuation of those services under the same terms and conditions. And we, the city desires to continue receiving those services pursuant to this non-exclusive agreement, which provides for termination within 120 days. As I mentioned to you all yesterday, we have contracted also with Card Connect to provide ongoing merchant services for card transactions. This allows us to continue with Bank of America until we have transitioned everything to Card to Connect. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Brown, just confirm for everyone, this agreement is the same that's been in place, including all of the relevant provisions?
Yes.
Okay. We're just doing this as a stopgap?
This is a stopgap, yes.
Very good. All right. Any further questions? We'll open up the public hearing on Resolution 842025. Anyone wishing to speak, last call. We'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 842025. Do I hear one?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See none? Ms. Sidens, please.
Naclis?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to item 11, quasi-judicial and related public hearings. And we have items A, A1, and A2. All of the hearings on these items will be combined because these items are interrelated, but we will take a separate vote on each item. Item A2 is quasi-judicial in nature, so the quasi-judicial procedures for the city will apply to the combined discussion. And if item A is not approved, no vote will be taken on items A1 and 2. And if item A1, if item A1 is not approved, no vote will be taken on item A2. So with that, Ms. Sidens, would you please read the titles of Resolutions 782025 and 792025?
Resolution 782025, "A Resolution of the City of Boca Raton Considering an Amendment to an Approved Phase Plan Mobility Development (PMD) Master Plan," Resolution Number 562014, as amended by Resolution Number 902016, "To 1. amend the phase lines such that an existing approximately 116,316 square-foot office building is located in Phase 2 rather than Phase 1; 2. amend the tabular data for Phase 1 to reflect the as-built development; and 3. authorize the construction of a 7-story, 289-unit multifamily residential building, a parking structure, and related site improvements as Phase 2 of the master plan, for the properties generally located at 850 Northwest Broken Sound Parkway, Phase 1, and 900 Northwest Broken Sound Parkway, Phase 2, providing for appeal or providing an effective date." Resolution Number 792025, "A Resolution of the City of Boca Raton Considering an Amendment to an Approved Site Plan (Resolution Number 572014), as amended by Resolution Number 912016, for a Commercial-Industrial Multifamily Development (CIMD) to authorize construction in Phase 2 of a Plan Mobility Development (PMD) Master Plan, a new 7-story, 289-unit multifamily residential building, including 10% affordable and 5% workforce housing units, a parking structure and related site improvements, together with one technical deviation from Section 23-190D2 Code of Ordinances, to reduce the required driveway reservoir distance for the easternmost driveway on Northwest Broken Sound Parkway from 100 feet to 70 feet, for the property generally located at 850 and nor, I'm sorry, 900 Northwest Broken Sound Parkway, providing for appeal or providing an effective date."
Thank you. We'll ask the city... Thank you. We'll ask the city attorney to review the quasi-judicial procedures that will govern tonight's public hearing.
Mayor and council, each applicant requesting approval, relief, or other action from the council this evening shall disclose at the commencement or continuance of the public hearing tonight any consideration, payment, provided or committed directly or indirectly on its behalf for an agreement to support or withhold objection to the requested relief or action for the board, for the council tonight. A summary of the quasi-judicial procedures governing this proceeding is available, attached to the agenda, and can be obtained from the city clerk.
Thank you. At this point, we'll ask council members if they have any ex parte communications they wish to disclose. I'll start on my left with Mr. Thompson.
I had a discussion with Paul Kilgallen about 10 minutes ago about how quickly his item would be heard. I believe that is the entirety of my ex parte communications.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Naclis.
My ex parte is only a few minutes ago, and Mr. Kilgallen told me he had a presentation.
Very well. Ms. Drucker?
The only time I think we've had a discussion on this project, I think there were one of the presenters that came here and presented when we had the Affordable Housing Symposium. And I think this is one of the projects. If it's not, then we can take it off the record.
Very well. Mr. Wigtler?
Likewise, the only ex parte I could recall is if it was during the Affordable Housing Symposium. Otherwise, no further ex parte that I could recall.
Thank you. And I have no ex parte communications to disclose. So at this point, we'll ask anyone who wishes to speak on this matter to please rise, so the clerk can administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you may give before this public hearing will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Owen Devlin, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department, will make the staff presentation on the 900 Broken Sound PMD/CIMD project.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Owen Devlin. I'm a senior planner here with Development Services, and I'm here to present the request for a master plan and site plan amendment, which includes a technical deviation from the city code of ordinances for the properties located at 850 and 900 Northwest Broken Sound Parkway. The approximately 30-acre property is located on northeast Broken Sound Parkway, just west of Congress Ave., which can be seen on the map. The project is divided into two phases, Phase 1 to the south, which has an address of 850 Northwest Broken Sound Parkway, and Phase 2 to the north, which has an address of 900 Northwest Broken Sound Parkway. The property is Zoned Light Industrial and Research Park, LRP, with a future land use designation of planned mobility. The applicant is requesting to amend an approved planned mobility development, also known as a PMD, master plan, and a previously approved site plan to construct a commercial-industrial multifamily development, also known as a CIMD, on Phase 2 of the plan. The approval would authorize the construction of a 7-story, 289-unit multifamily residential building, together with a technical deviation to reduce the required driveway reservoir distance for the easternmost driveway on Northwest Broken Sound. The CIMD project will include 29 affordable housing units and 15 workforce housing units. Some general history on the site. On January 21st, 1988, the Planning Zoning Board adopted a resolution granting site plan approval to authorize the construction of the existing office building on site, also known as the Siemens Building. On June 10th, 2014, the city council adopted Resolution Number 56 and 572014, approving the two-phased PMD master plan and amending the previous office building site plan. Phase 1 consists of the existing office building, together with a new 370-unit multifamily residential development, which was constructed, and it also authorized the construction in Phase 2 of two additional office buildings and a parking structure, which was never constructed. On September 13th, 2016, the city council adopted Resolution Number 902016 and 912016, which modified certain conditions of approval related to the PMD matrix and restrictions to the private waste pickup. On December 10th, 2019, the city council adopted Resolution Number 1562019 and 1572019, amending the PMD master plan and site plan to create a new Phase 3 from a portion of the existing Phase 2. The application authorized the construction of a 7-story, 124-room hotel in the reshaped Phase 2, and a 5-story, approximately 74,000-square-foot office building with a detached parking structure in the new Phase 3. However, these improvements authorized as part of that application were never constructed, and both resolutions have since expired.
Mr. Devlin? Before you go on, could I ask you a question about that, please?
Yeah, of course.
When you say "both resolutions," we're talking about 2014, 2016, or 2019, or all three?
2014 is the original. That was amended for, at 2016, which was pretty much just changing of conditions of approval. Nothing changed with the site plan. 2019, they came in to make a new Phase 3. The 2019 resolution has expired, so we're back to the 2016 as the active resolution.
And why in 2016 is it active because of a variety of tolling under state statute and our code?
The requirements in the, so most times when you do a resolution, there are certain requirements that have to be met, like prior to building, prior to this, you have to do that. That site plan didn't have any changes to the original. That was constructed, if that makes sense. I don't know, Brandon, if you can...
The PMD matrix went from 150-point requirement to 100-point requirement, so they came in to amend the conditions to reduce what they needed to do in terms of mobility.
Right. But then, I guess, going back to the 2014, there was no time certain by which they had to, that approved, the basic 2014 is still remain viable in one sense or another all this time?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to the PMD master plan itself, the proposed master plan, which consists of them, two phases, which were originally approved in 2014, is displayed on screen. Phase 1, which includes 370 residential units, has been completed. Phase 2, which is, if approved tonight, will consist of a proposed CIMD. Each phase can function on its own, standalone development, with the overall master plan aligned with the intended purpose of a PMD, which is to encourage multi-mix-use land use patterns that support and enhance the city's non-residential employee centers and are characterized by pedestrian-oriented site design. The applicant is proposing to construct a 7-story, 289-unit multifamily residential building, which will encompass 10% or 25, or 29 affordable housing units, as well as an additional 5% or 15 workforce housing units, along with a parking structure. The multifamily residential building will feature various amenities, which include a clubhouse, lobby, lounge, co-working space, swimming pool, dog park, and pet spa. Furthermore, it will incorporate a fitness center on the first floor, accessible to the general public. The site has been designed to enhance pedestrian mobility on site, providing sidewalk connections to the existing office building and cross-access to the residential developments located to the east and south, as well as pedestrian access to the existing lake walkway. Additionally, seating and pedestrian lighting has been integrated along the existing walkways around the property, including the lake. The applicant is requesting one technical deviation as part of the site plan from code Section 23-190D2 to reduce the required driveway reservoir distance for the easternmost major suburban driveway from 100 feet to 70 feet. The black arrow on screen shows the 70 feet on the plan. The driveway was approved as part of the original or the previous master plan. In this application, the driveway itself has been reclassified from an intermediate driveway to a major suburban driveway. The driveway connection is to a local road within the industrial park and experiences relatively low traffic volumes. The operational analysis indicates that there are no significant delays or queues. Therefore, city staff support this technical deviation. For your reference, I have included some elevations on screen, from the top down, the south elevation. In the center is the west elevation, and the north elevation is at the bottom of the screen. General overview of staff's analysis, the PMD master plan aligns with the intended purpose of a PMD, which is to enhance multiple and mixed-use land patterns. Phase 2 meets the requirements and development standards for a CIMD. The project will continue to meet all PMD requirements, including the PMD matrix. The project also provides an additional 289 dwelling units for the city, 29 of which will be affordable and 15 workforce housing. The project is consistent and compatible with the adjacent land uses. The project, as designed, supports the goals, objectives, and the policies in the comp plan, and the project complies with all applicable code requirements, except for the one driveway reservoir distance, which we mentioned earlier, as part of the technical deviation. The Phase 2 site plan went before the Community Appearance Board on December 3rd, 2024. CAB recommended approval with suggested modifications that are summarized as follows: to enhance the landscaping around the proposed parking structure to provide better screening and ensure that there is no light spillage from the structure. The applicant has provided additional landscaping and replaced certain tree species with those that would provide more screening. The CAB also suggested gray for the color of the glass and a dark bronze for the railings, which the applicant accepted and has included on their elevation drawings. The Planning Zoning Board reviewed this application last week, on June 5th, 2025. The vice chair requested additional information regarding the shuttle contribution, and if it was applicable to the new CIMD, which it is. The board voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the application, as it was submitted. The Development Services Department recommends approval of the PMD master plan amendment, the CIMD site plan, and technical deviation, subject to the conditions set forth in the accommodating resolutions. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm welcome to answer any additional questions you guys may have.
Thank you. Councilmember, any questions? All right. If there are no questions, we'll invite the applicant to come forward first. Please give your name and address. You have up 20 minutes, although you might not need it all.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Thompson. I'm with the law firm, Miskell Bachman, located at 14 Southeast 4th Street in Boca Raton. Thank you, Owen, for that wonderful presentation. We do have a presentation ourselves that we are prepared to give, if you'd like to hear it. But I do want to be respectful of your time. I know it's been a long night. Otherwise, we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Councilmember, any questions?
Just for the benefit of everyone here, talk about the, just the change in the phase. Originally, this was to be office, then that didn't get built, and now you're looking to come in on a CIMD?
Yes. So obviously, the CIMD ordinance is new to the city, and people are looking to utilize it to the best of their abilities. And there are limited units available. So obviously, with the Live Local Act, we're using subsection 7 of that state statute. We do want to provide a beautiful, aesthetically pleasing and modern living environment for not only residents paying the full market value of these units, but as well as the affordable and workforce housing in addition to those.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Wigtler?
Yes. This is really a question, I guess, for Mr. Shad. For this regulatory approval, is a concurrency analysis necessary? And if so, what is the proper time for the concurrency analysis to occur?
Are you referring specifically to traffic concurrency?
Yes.
There is. It has been conducted, and the county issued an approval.
And it's conducted before, before it, before staff completes its recommendation to P&amp;Z, I guess, or?
Yes.
Yes. And when we look at the, let's say, impact fees for building permits and level of service and lendedication fund, when is the, when is the time where those things occur, those analyses?
Traffic impact fees, all impact fees are paid at the time of issuance of the building permit.
And when are they calculated? After, have they already been calculated, or are they calculated after the regulatory approval is given?
They're calculated at the time of issuance of the building permit, but right before they're paid. We can, you know, it's easy enough to calculate what they would be today. They may go up a little before issuance of the building permit, depending on when that is.
Right. But that's after, once a building permit is done, all those things, all those fees are paid, and when all those analyses are done at that time?
Correct.
Thank you. Further questions?
All right. Thank you. We'll ask anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter. Please come forward. Anyone? All right. Since no one else came forward, there'll be no cross-examination. Would the applicant like to sum up or just waive that time? The applicant has indicated that they wish to waive, so with that, we will close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion then first on Resolution 782025. Do I hear a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you to the applicant for utilizing this important workforce housing ordinance that the council and the staff has worked over the course of years to put into effect. I know it's not a lot of units, but each one is important to make sure that some of the people that, that work here can afford to live here. And that's important to the future of the city, and it reduces traffic, right? It's one of these things, creating this mixed-use component reduces traffic, and this is a great place to do so. And it's going to fill that missing middle gap that we just talked about for so long. So thank you for incorporating these important things into the plan. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion on Resolution 782025? See none? Ms. Sidens, please.
Singer?
Yes.
Naclis?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. We'll now take up Resolution 792025. Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I do have a question just for staff. Can you please confirm that because this is a residential building, when you did the analysis of the technical deviation and driveway reservoir, part of which was already baked in from a prior approval, that you did not anticipate any sort of specialized vehicles queuing up?
I don't know what you mean by specialized vehicles.
You, we recently dealt with another technical deviation concerning a very special type of vehicle that might have been coming on certain frequencies. We don't anticipate that sort of issue here.
We do not.
Very good. Right. Any further discussion or questions? Then Ms. Sidens, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Drucker?
Yes.
Naclis?
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero. Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our quasi judicial matters. We have no regular public hearings. We have no regular public hearings for settlements, so I'll open the floor to public requests. I do have a few cards from Lynn Newberry and Jimmy Moscoso. I know, I believe you're both here to talk about an item that's going to be introduced tonight, so now would be the appropriate time to talk about it. If it's introduced tonight, as is expected shortly, that will be at our next council meeting.
Okay. First, I want to address-
Please give your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lynn Newberry, 5424 Grand Park Place. I have two items really quickly. One is the skate, the proposed skate park at North Park, and I fully support that because these these young men and women have no place to skate where they are not pushed out or are safe. And the it, the noise is not an issue because with new technology for skateboards, they do not make as much noise as a playground, a baseball field, a basketball court, pickleball. So that's not an issue. And the young men and women now, the community of skateboarders are very educated. They're not the hoodlums they used to hear about. We have, we have a 23-year-old who is now a project manager of a prestigious architectural firm in Delray. We have an 18-year-old who just graduated with his college degree from high school, and also we have a 25-year-old who is now working at Miami Children's Hospital as her doctorate for children with autism. So it's not, you know, they just get a bad rap. The second thing I want to talk about is the item on the agenda with the preserve there across from Fairfield at Boca where we live. There is a small preserve there that's 2.1, I think it's 15C on the agenda, 2.1 acres of preserve. We were all told it was to remain a preserve and not be built on. Now we have a developer that wants to take two-thirds of it, 1.4 acres, and build a seven-story building there, a business office building. There is a large sign there, even though when he speaks, I was at the advisory, an environmental advisory board meeting, who unanimously denied taking away the designation of his preserve. I was also at the planning and zoning, where two members were voted against changing it from a preserve. So being it is a preserve, I would think that the council would listen to what the environmental advisory board would advise, or why do we have this board, and the two members on the planning and zoning. And we just, we will, we will lose privacy, we will have people looking in bedroom windows that are facing it in our community. So we also have, we have several people here that are also opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moscoso, excuse me, Moscoso.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Moscoso. I live in 5442 Grand Park Place in Boca. I'm here actually for the first time joining into this type of meetings, and I welcome them, and thank you for opening up and educating plenty of residents like myself. The reason why I'm here is obviously to speak about the situation that's happening around Restaurant Row on Military Trail in Lenox. Lynn, my neighbor, also spoke about that. My point is, these days, a 2.1 acre lot is almost as small as it gets, and for the city or the developer to be considering breaking that apart and just leaving 0.7 acre of space as preserve, in and of itself, the intersection between Lenox and Military, for all of the children, I have two, it's already busy enough and is dangerous enough with the Bank of America building, the plaza that is next door, now the new restaurants, all of that traffic continues to pile up inside our gated community, and we walk dogs, we have children that walk in the community. So I guess my point is, if you can consider the effects of if this ends up being approved, even though I'm against it, is to understand how family lives will be changed based on the traffic, not only cars, but also walking across those streets. That's all, and again, thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please.
Good evening, and thank you for listening. My name is Dennis Forgione. I am not only a 35-year resident, but I am also a licensed practicing arborist doing work for the city of Boca Raton for the past 10 years.
Thank you. And can you give an address, please?
I'm sorry?
An address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. 5456 Grand Park Place.
Thank you.
So as an arborist, for doing work for the city and city spaces for the past 10 years, we were always taught to cherish our passive green spaces. So in relation to the parcel of land on Military Trail, the 2.1 acres, that is passive green space that we, I'm telling you as an arborist, we need. Our city is shrinking down our green spaces, and that's mature green spaces like that you won't get back. That's it. Just putting grass down somewhere else doesn't do the trick. So I beg of the council to consider keeping that a green space for the city. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call for, oh, yes, sir, please.
Hi, my name is Carlos Truera, and I live at 5414 Grand Park Place, Fairfield, Boca. And I've been here for six months. I moved from Atlanta, Georgia, where I lived for 35 years, a place where they preserved a lot of land, they preserved a lot of places. And the reason I moved to Boca Raton, I also work for Mr. Grant Cardone, who owns a few properties around Boca, Ten X Meisner, and he's buying another one at Camino Real, 101 Meisner, for about $300 million. And I asked him, what, what's the, what's your recipe for going and buying real estate like this? And he says, location, location, and location. What a location is, you know, there's a preserved area there that we're going to lose. You put a seven-story building there, we're going to lose the sunset. The sunset is going to be early for us. You know, we're not going to have our safety for our children anymore. The traffic is already horrendous. I, you know, in six months that I've been here, I saw about, you know, five or six major accidents on that cross from the Town Center Mall and Military Trail. And the traffic is going to be worse. The more business you put in there, the more people are going to come to work, the more we're going to see and face a big distress in there, you know? And the second reason that I moved to Boca, it was for my daughter's school. And one of the best schools ever are here in Boca, and I wanted her to go to those schools, so I purposely bought this place, you know, because I want her to go to that school, particular school. And now, you know, we see, you know, a couple of months ago, we had the accident with the airplane, which is not supposed to, you know, all airplanes fly over our house, and they're supposed to go another route, but no, they take a shortcut and fly to another house. We tried to call FCC, we tried to say, you know, many things, but, you know, they continue flying over, you know, Fairfield, Boca. And now, you know, we're going to lose 2.1 acres, which is not much of preserved space, you know, for a building, seven-story building, that's going to, you know, disrupt our lives, make our investment go down, be more, you know, dangerous in traffic and everything else. So I urge you guys to really take a look at this again and listen to the experts, you know, the people who are trying to preserve this place and maintain the way it is. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Last call for public request this evening. All right, this closes the time for public request. Thank you for staying around. We'll now turn to introduction of ordinances, and I'll ask Ms. Sittens to read the title of ordinance 5735.
Ordinance number 5735, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton amending ordinance number 4035, the Boca Raton Downtown Development of Regional Impact, DDRI Development Order, as amended, to provide that the office allocation in downtown subarea D and downtown subarea G may, by conversion only, be reduced by up to 90%, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 5735.
Very well, thank you. We'll now turn to ordinance 5736, please.
Ordinance number 5736, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton considering for the approximately 4.06 acre property generally located at 202 West Jamato Road, an amendment to an approved universal conditional UC rezoning ordinance, ordinance number 4500, to delete a restriction that prohibits freestanding restaurant buildings with drive-throughs, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this ordinance?
Mayor, I'd move to read. Ordinance 5736.
I'll give it to Ms. Knackless, and she's been close on the last two, but we'll have another one if anyone wants to introduce ordinance 5737, which we'll read now.
Ordinance number 5737, an ordinance of the city of Boca Raton considering an amendment to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by redesignating certain property consisting of approximately 0.70 acres, generally located at 5458 Town Center Road and 1 Town Center Road from Plan Mobility, PM, to Conservation, N, providing for revisions to the future land use map, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who would like to introduce this?
Thank you, everybody. I will be happy to introduce ordinance number 5737.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, and that concludes our introduction of ordinances tonight. We have no quasi judicial public hearings for variances and appeals, so I'll turn to city manager reports and recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to section 12 103 of the city code, staff is currently conducting a review of the retirement and disability benefits for both retired and current employees in the general employees pension plan as required by the code. The purpose of that is to determine if such benefits have been seriously eroded by increases in the cost of living. The code requires this review to be completed in every odd numbered year, but it does not require that changes in benefits be made as part of the process. Our review will be completed as part of the preparation of the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget, with any change in benefits being effective October 1, 2025. This is just to advise you that we are in the process required by code. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, council?
Yes.
Mr. Wiger.
Mr. Brown, how long does this review take? I might, I apologize if I'm in here.
It will be part of the budget process.
So before September, I guess, by September?
Yes. Any changes that we have, will we adopt it in the budget?
In the budget, okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Brown, further report?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you. City attorney reports, Mr. Kaler.
Yeah, it's pursuant to 286, chapter 286 0118, and section 227 of our code, requesting authorization from the council to schedule executive session and follow up executive sessions as appropriate to receive advice from the council concerning pending litigation, both styled, on two cases, both styled Northeast 32nd Street, the city of Boca Raton, versus case number 25CA629, which is the fill permit case. Second case is 25CA467, which is the clearing permit case. The request is limited to those two pending matters. No additional authorization is being sought, and I would plan to coordinate the scheduling of the executive sessions at a future date accordingly, and then provide counsel with appropriate notice and materials in advance consistent with applicable law. So if I would request a motion authorizing an executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And it is unanimous then, Mr. Kaler. Any further report?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Councilor reports, I'll start with Ms. Knackless tonight, we'll mix it up a little, we'll go round the horn.
Thank you. Mine will be quick. I just wanted to reiterate something that Senator Polsky had mentioned today about the My Safe Florida Home dollars coming back out. So anyone looking to do the upgrades, windows, garage doors, things that are eligible, she wanted to remind everybody to sign up early because those dollars will go quickly. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, and and Mayor Singer will probably mention it, is also, everybody can stay informed by by following us on social media, by going on the myboca.us website, and also, I'm always talking about the alert Boca. And before we came in tonight, I got an alert on my phone about something. So if you text ALERTBOCA, one word, to 38276, you will be alerted to meetings, you will be alerted to things happening in the city, you will be alerted to garbage days that are that are changed, you will get all kinds of things to stay up to date. So please do that very simple thing on your phone, text ALERTBOCA, one word, to 38276 to stay up to date, including updates on the government master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. No report, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wiger.
Nothing further, thank you.
Ms. Drucker.
No, just wanted to thank staff again for all the hard work these past months, thank my colleagues up here. We're getting ready to go on a summer, a little bit of a hiatus, but we're always accessible. You can find us, and there's a lot of misinformation, so just email us so you can get the correct information, and wishing everybody a happy summer. Be safe out there.
Thank you. And as, yes, while we do not have another meeting this month, it is anything but a hiatus for the hardworking city staff, the nearly 1800 people who serve us every single day in ways that we don't take for granted. We have a number of initiatives which we're working on. It's hardworking for my colleagues, too, I know, because we pour ourselves into this job, and there are so many fun events that we'll be having over the summer, our Fourth of July, whole schedule of events are some of the city concert series, which kicks off this Friday night at Meisner Park Amphitheater. Stay in tune for correct information, city events, and a whole range of other things that will help make your lives better and more meaningful at myboca.us. If there's nothing to come before us else, seeing nothing else, we are adjourned at 9:01. Thank you.